Everyone, we are gonna get started here. We're continuing with our study sessions this morning. And we are on neighborhood services. We're still completing. And then after that, we will move on to transportation and aviation services. All right, so why don't we take the roll?
Okay, Jimenez. Torres. Cohen.
Here.
Ortiz.
Present.
Davis. Dwan.
Here.
Candellis.
Here.
Foley. Batra.
Yes, present.
Kamay.
Here.
Mahan.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Great, thank you. Okay, I'm gonna turn it back over to staff.
I think we're on questions.
You're correct.
Unless you want me to do another presentation. Just kidding.
It was great. We did enjoy it. Okay, I know we had a number of hands up when we concluded previously, so let me go to Councilor Cohen.
My hand wasn't up previously, but since nobody else is jumping in, I'll ask one more question. So, in the budget proposal, there are a couple of programs in the libraries that are slated to be cut. The Partners in Reading and the Maker Mobile. There are staff on those positions. Are we able to fully accommodate those staff in other places in the department?
We're working closely with our Human Resources Department to try to avoid any layoffs and find places for everyone.
So I guess the answer is at this point, we're not sure, but we think we'll be able, you think we'll be able to be successful?
We've already found places for several, and I don't know if the city manager...
We are very confident we're gonna be able to find places for most everyone, if not all.
Okay, thank you.
Conversations with John and the rest of our Parks Department. There are tons of fantastic projects that I'm grateful to see included, as well as some reserve balances that I'm excited to discuss further with staff about. So just have a few questions. So on page 256, it speaks to many artificial turf improvements across the city. I just wanted to understand a quick piece on this. Are these proposed to be funded by this budget? Or are these cost estimates for a later time should we choose to fund them?
Is that on the capital budget?
256. I'm just trying to get to the page of 256 there. Is that in the community services, development CSA? I'm sorry, the neighborhood services CSA? 256. It says, "We do, probably if you do have questions about the artificial turf program, we do have, probably we can cover that in the capital version of the study sessions, either later today or tomorrow."
Oh, really? Okay. All right. All right, then, these questions are all related to that, so I'll hold them.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Vice Mayor.
So, I'm not sure if this is the appropriate time to bring it up or not, but I'm going to bring it up anyway. And, you know, I want to express sort of the alternative in the contingency that was brought forward regarding what we want to do with Measure E in housing. And so, I just want to express the concern, especially in the second year. I think that while I understand that there is a need to address the issues with the stormwater permits and all of that, and I totally get it, right? But I also think that the second-year contingency really needs a better look because it really diminishes our ability. And I know that our housing director just got here, so welcome. And I just put it out there because it is a concern. You know, while I understand that any kind of movement that we have, we're going to have an opportunity to take a look at, what is laid out, I think, is quite dire for the second year, next fiscal year. And so, I don't know about these grants that are going to be coming in, but I do think that if they don't come in, and we have to, you know, sort of like, take a larger chunk, it causes a lot of issues down the line. Maybe not immediately, but down the line. So I think that we need to look and think harder in that area, especially on the contingency plan. I'm hoping someone says yes.
Yeah, and if I could say, Vice Mayor, for sure, we will continue to be looking at other options that may present themselves over the course of the year, and that was one of our strategies, in looking at it, sort of a two-year process to make sure that we can take advantage of any other strategies that may come up over the course of the year before we get to the next budget cycle.
Yeah. And I guess the message that I'd like for everyone to understand, at least for this one person here, is that we need a vehicle for more long-term and sustainability of dealing with having to pay for operating and all of that. I think the EIHs are fine in terms of being able to try to get them going and all of that, but I think that we need, we as a council and mayor, need to really take a look at what this means for other services in the long run as well. So, the fact that in the contingency plan, you know, it sort of like, gives us the idea, "Well, you know, maybe it'll be all right for next year or the year after that." But I think that if you start, you know, sort of like, spreading it out, it really makes a difference. So I just want, I just want, I don't want this to be a casual, "Oh, yes, we'll look at it." This is something that I think that has repercussions over a longer period of time. And I do know that, you know, there are other things that we're trying to do in terms of bringing regional measures and all of that, but those are not yet here. So, I just want us to be, you know, very aware of all of that and be able to, you know, address it sooner rather than later. So, that's all.
I just think we should clarify, the contingency plan is really, relates to the first year into '24-'25 with the grants that we're going to be going after. And again, you have our commitment that if those don't come to fruition, that we will look at other alternatives before we have to implement the contingency plan. But we need a contingency plan to have a balanced budget and to be able to certify that the budget actually will work in a responsible fiscal manner. The second year of the measure-year allocation, because we only have it, we only have it as a two-year allocation, does have a bigger take from the affordable housing money, as is laid out in the budget, given we didn't have, feel we had another choice. But because it is a year out, we feel like we have time to look for other solutions rather than doing that, knowing that affordable housing is super important, and these are super difficult choices. So, we do, that does, but we, what we need, in order to get this budget in balance and follow our budgeting principles and our budgeting policies, we need to have something that makes this budget work, but that does not mean that we can't change course on that in year two. And so, we do have some things that we've been thinking about for that, if they can come to fruition, but there is no easy answer.
I also think it's just worth noting that those Measure E revenues are quite variable, and they have bounced from 107 at a high to 45 million, and so there's a lot of variability. And I, you know, while we're on a downward swing now, and I can't predict what it'll look like in two or three years, even in the scenario in which we have high operating costs to get people stabilized and sheltered and comply with the Clean Water Act, there is potentially a lot of upside if we start to see real estate transactions go back to the level where Measure E's contributing $100 million a year to the general fund, then suddenly, we have a lot more money to put into construction of new affordable. So I just want to note that, right now, we're sort of in a perfect storm of needing to move a couple thousand people out of the waterways, as we also see Measure E revenues down at about the lowest level they've been. And hopefully, that is not the case forevermore.
I totally understand that. The one thing that I recall from last year's budget, I did not vote for the budget last year because there was a intent on looking at the balance that comes back in the fall.
Ending fund.
Ending fund. And I didn't think that that was a good public policy type of thing to do, to say, "Oh, well, you know, we want to approve all of these things and, you know, take this from the ending balance," right? And so, I think that it's easy just to think that we can go from year to year to year to year, but I also think that, and I understand wanting to balance the budget, and I'm okay with that, but I also want to caution that if we don't start thinking about the long-term repercussions of our decisions today, that we will end up in a worse place, right? Because I think that sometimes it's very easy to think, "Oh, well, you know, we're thinking about this year, maybe next year," but we don't think about, you know, a few years down the line. And I just wanted to create that awareness, that we need to think a little bit broader. And of course, I understand that a lot of things can happen in the interim, and I'm glad that, you know, staff is looking at, you know, alternatives and, you know, other grants, and I know we've been very successful with the grants, but I also am concerned. So I'm expressing my concern.
And I think that's a very fair assessment, as your city manager. I agree, and that's why we're, we've been putting and enhancing our five-year forecast to really show what the impacts are, because it is becoming a much bigger part of the general fund over time as we make the investments. And so, those are obviously policy decisions for the city council. I would, I will be bold here and caution the city council to please be cautious about trying to lock up any ending fund balance this year, because that would be a place. We have a policy on our ending fund balance. If we have, we try to always position ourselves to have a little bit of extra funding balance, because we don't want to be in the red and be negative when we end any given year, so we try to have a little bit of modest amount of money left over, so we, again, so we're not negative and having to rebalance the budget again. But that would be another area that I would intend to want to set aside for the affordable housing, in case the grants didn't come through. I'd rather put some of that money in reserve in case we did not have any money. So, we have policies related to that. One of the major policies related to our ending fund balance is that we save that money if we have a deficit in the next year, which we all know, that if you approve this budget, we have a $37 million deficit, we have, I believe, a $20 million reserve towards it. We still have a $17 million anticipated shortfall for the following year. Normally, any fund balance would be reserved to help offset that, but there are, that would be one area that I'd also be very cautious of pre-spending, given some of these unknowns out there for next year, and trying to, again, balance all these needs.
Thanks, Vice Mayor. I do think the Vice Mayor raises a good point. I just want to acknowledge that the administration, I think, has, if we dive into the documents produced by Jennifer, Jim, and the team, done a good job of helping us understand what this means over the next five years. I think it's a very clear decision that we have to make, and I think we've already made through, in many ways, through a series of votes, that this council has taken largely unanimously, going back over the last three, four years. We face difficult trade-offs. I think what, you know, ballpark, what I recall from Jim's five-year estimate is, when we look out five years, the operating costs around sheltering thousands of people, and hopefully, there's throughput. People are continuing to graduate out of those shelter placements, but the exposure, if we don't have support from county or state or federal resources, or at least very minimal, is on the order of $70 million a year. That's a significant investment. I think the flip side is, I think we have to ask ourselves, are we okay with the status quo? And what happens if we don't make those investments? The number-one issue we hear from the community over and over again is addressing unsheltered homelessness. People, our most vulnerable residents, living, and literally, to the tune of 200 people a year, dying on our streets. The impacts of RVs, we've talked about many times in recent years. The, of course, now, requirement we have to start moving people out of the waterways. In fact, and that leads to my first question here, I was reading in the Mercury News yesterday that Valley Water is considering a countywide ballot measure that would actually, if passed, simply ban camping along any waterways, anywhere in the county. And so, that brings us back to this urgent need to get people into safe, managed alternatives to the unmanaged encampments on our streets and connected to basic sanitation, basic services, which I think is an imperative we face, even if it is costly to implement. Can staff share a little more with the investment we're making this year in coming into compliance with the Clean Water Act and protecting our stormwater permit? Can we talk a little more about some of the goals that are contemplated for the coming fiscal year? I know the one that jumped out at me was piloting safe sleeping sites that could create in a, you know, relatively immediate alternative for about 500 people living along the waterways. There's a lot of discussion of outreach. Obviously, we have a pipeline of another, almost 800 interim units that are at different stages of development, but have all been approved by the council and have sites, and in many cases, draw on funding from the state or other partners. But can you help us better understand where we will be in a year after we've spent the $27 million initial investment in coming into compliance with the Clean Water Act?
Hi, Mayor. I can start that off and maybe ask Omar to come down to talk it, to talk through. I think you laid it out there well, in terms of the priorities, trying to identify different sites to get folks out of the creeks, and I'll let Omar take it there.
So, the direct answer to the question, "Where will we be a year from now?" is, we don't know yet, but to be just really direct about it, the urgency exists right now, and so, we're actually in the process of setting it up to move aggressively this calendar year, in line with prior council direction. So, I think the goal is to make substantial progress, to demonstrate to the Water Board that people have a safe, alternative place to be. And so, we've identified, you know, several potential sites. We'll be coming back with a memo to council next month, and I think we'll be able to share, as we move into that place, more specificity about how far, how much progress will we be able to make in the next 12 months.
Okay, thank you. So when you come back to council in about a month, and we talk about potential sites for these faster, more cost-effective, but still managed alternatives to encampments, at that point, will we be able to get a better sense of the goals the administration's laying out? I've got the one that is in there, about 500 people being moved into a safe sleeping site of some kind, but will there be more detail on what we're getting for the investment? At estimates, of course.
Yeah, so I think, I think that the estimate in your question is doing a lot of work there, right? I do think that we'll be in a better position to give some brushstrokes. As you'll remember, on March 5th, when we came to council, we said, "Look, there's a phase zero kind of planning process that's underway, and so, what I don't want to do is sort of preempt working with the seven or eight or nine departments that all do that." But I do think that what you'll see is a clear sort of directionality towards what that will be, and I think we'll have some more correspondence in between now and then to try to refine how much we'll be ready to daylight on June 18th.
Okay. Well, I think that's important. I think one thing, it's, I suspect all of us on the council agree on, is as we take the steps we need to take to be in compliance and avoid significant legal risk, which, by the way, I'll just remind folks, we've faced before, we have had $100 million settlements over pollution in our waterways, largely from other sources, but this is not a theoretical risk. As we take those steps, I think one thing we likely all agree on is that we can't simply abate folks or sweep them into the neighborhoods. We obviously need a really clear plan for where people are going to go and how we're going to get them connected to basic sanitation, basic security, ideally, some level of case management, though that may, there are limits to the scalability for the very cost reasons the Vice Mayor highlighted. Let me, if you want to respond to that, you can, or, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I think the one thing I would say, you know, the mayor and council adopted as part of the budget message, a call for making sure that folks had wash access, water, sanitation, hygiene, like, in a richest part of the richest portion of the world, being able to provide that is just, that should be a minimal floor, right? So it's really, really part of the reason that we don't have exactly dialed in some of these questions that you're asking, is that we need to make sure that we're creating sites that people will use and can use, and that they account for things like, many times more likely to be mobility impaired if you live on the street, so we've got to be very cautious about where and what. But I do think that the spirit of what was laid out and voted on by the council in the budget message is where we're aiming.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to turn to another component of this effort. The March message that we adopted directed staff to improve encampment management everywhere, not just along the waterways, and referenced some specific areas where we would like to see greater clarity around what the rules are and how they will be enforced. Things like the 12-by-12 size of an encampment, thresholds for either enhanced cleanups or abatement, especially related to levels of fire risk and crime was outlined, the generation of trash and bio-waste, prohibiting and enforcing prohibition of driving and parking on city trails and in city parks, and so forth. One of the things I've noticed in the thousands of interactions out at community meetings is, most of the community is generally understanding and even compassionate about the fact that we have folks who are out there, who have no other choice, and are suffering immensely. I think there's a compassion for homelessness. I think where we get the real intense pushback from the community is when people feel that people who are unhoused are not being good neighbors, and that when, it's when there's fire risk of literally their home or business burning down, or piles of trash. And now, we have to do more to empower those who are unhoused to comply with rules, to manage their trash, to have access to sanitation. But we talk a lot in the March message about, what are the expectations for everyone, housed or unhoused, not just in the waterways, and how will we enforce those? And so, I know that's coming back to council, but we sort of have a situation here where we're asking the council to approve millions of dollars in funding for staff capacity for programs that are yet to be fully defined in accordance with the March message. So the sequencing is a little tough here for us on the council, and I guess I'd like to just get early thinking on, how are we going to comply with the March message and the direction that the council gave around better enforcing a code of conduct on our streets?
Yeah, so I'll start, and then I'll ask Johnson Sorelli to expand as well, if he's got something to add. I think it's important for the mayor and council to understand that even just the, you know, couple paragraphs worth of communication that you just had, there is a massive enchilada baked into what you just described, right? And so, while we need to be intentional and urgent on moving forward, I think what we're looking at is how to make demonstrable improvement in this next fiscal year on a continuous basis, right? So starting with, even before, frankly, there'll be some things that start, if adopted, once their framework is in place, right? But there are several things that require not just resourcing, which is part of what you just described, but also the data question. So you mentioned fire, sort of costly and environmentally impactful. One of the things that we'll be talking about next month when we come back is, look, the getting uniquely identifiable mechanism for each individual encampment, so that we have a geolocation that you can then say, "How dangerous is this location?" Either because of traffic fatalities, or people in the encampment being victimized, et cetera, and then be able to get to some of the questions the mayor just mentioned about costly and impactful. I think what you'll see is that there are several things that the policy efforts that the mayor and council have put in place, that, you know, PRNS and DOT in varying ways are already starting to plan for, et cetera, so I think you'll see some of that. I want to turn it over to John Sisorelli, see if he's got anything he'd like to add to flesh that.
Thank you, Omar. John Sisorelli, Director of Parks Recreation and Neighborhood Services. So, we have added some resources that are proposed, I should say, in this budget. They include, for example, increasing the level of weekly trash service to encampments, because we have a gap, right? We don't have enough resources to get to the encampments that we know of. So that would get us to around probably a couple hundred encampments. And the process would be that those people that are doing the trash service are the ones that are sort of doing the weekly monitoring of the space. And in those interactions, they can, you know, check for compliance, ask for compliance, but we're not expecting them to do a lot of compliance work, because they need to say on the trash route, right? That process has to remain efficient. But they're the eyes. And if something is not working, so I came out last week, and I told you, John, that you had to clean this up, and you had to get into a smaller footprint, and you can't have that propane tank over there, whatever it is, get your stuff in your tent, and I come back this week, "John, it's worse, it's not better." We would have an escalation, that would go to a different level, that would then come out and specifically evaluate and look at, and we would create, in line with some of the things Omar's talking about, about sort of these shared frameworks, we would create a system where we could gauge or measure and say, "You've, we've been out here too many times, we've done too many escalated cleanups, you're still not getting it," or whatever the issue is. In some cases, it could be immediate, right? It could be, something has just gone sideways now, and it just has to go now. But in most cases, it's going to be more of trying to gain voluntary compliance, but after some point, we would have to then, if we've already tried escalated cleanups, then it would be abatements. Now, that's not an ideal solution either, because we're just move the problem, right? The problem will pop up somewhere else unless they have somewhere to go, but that's how we envision it. And we added more community actively specialists, right? That's the new position that we're using for the no-return zones. And those we added, along with the waterway stuff, because we know there's going to be a lot of this interaction along the waterways, and so that will be, particularly in the areas where we will initially focus on, that will be part of their focus, is trying to get everybody into compliance. That said, you know, there isn't, other than abatement, you know, we don't have built-in, "Well, you're going to get a ticket, or fined, or arrested," or anything like that. So, abatement really is the big stick in the whole equation, but abatement, as I just mentioned, really doesn't actually solve the problem.
The one thing that I would add for the mayor and council is, something that was in the budget message, we, I think collectively, have had this conversation multiple times as our teams have started to talk to people who live outside, people who have lived outside. What we're hearing already is, like, our ability to improve what the community sees, both unhoused and unhoused, housed, will go up by virtue of creating the spaces that we're talking about. So in addition to what John is talking about, we are directly hearing, "Look, give us a place that is, you know, safe and clean and basic, and you won't see some of what you're seeing."
Agreed. And that's why, look, the primary strategy here is to rapidly scale up safe, managed alternatives of all types across the board, because clearly, putting all of our eggs in the basket of the one slowest, most expensive approach is leaving thousands of people for what will be decades on end. So we need multiple rungs on the ladder, or, you know, a spectrum, whatever analogy you prefer. I think that has to be the primary strategy, but in the meantime, there is some social compact that exists. I got a call from extremely distraught small-business owner in District 7 last night. He said, you know, he's in an industrial area, talking with his neighbors, who are all small and medium-sized businesses, and they're just, they're done, they want to leave. They say, "We contribute hundreds of thousands of dollars a year to the tax base, and there doesn't appear to be any commitment or social compact on the other side." I mean, we, you know, it's one thing to have RVs parked here, because people don't have anywhere else to go, it's another thing to have the trash, the graffiti, the break-ins, to be watching drug dealing all day. We're done, we're not renewing our lease. When it comes up, we're leaving, we're going to go somewhere else. They can enforce basic laws that has some code of conduct, some set of expectations that it will enforce one way or another. And look, not everything is about police enforcement, not everything's going to be an abatement, but every department that has a tool, including our partners at the county, public health, DA, behavioral health, PD, DOT, code, parks and rec, we got to get everybody around the table and say, "What's the, what is the social compact in our city? If you're a small business here, if you're a resident here, and you're paying taxes, what can you expect as a baseline?" Because that's our responsibility. And I just, I know it's not easy, we're not going to get to a perfect level everywhere all at once, granted, we don't have the resources, but I want to push us to define what people can expect from us, because we're going to lose businesses, and they're not going to come back, and we're going to lose the tax base, and it's going to get harder, these conversations are going to get harder. Forget funding affordable housing, we're going to be talking about keeping libraries open, if we can't keep the tax base here. So I just, I want to keep pushing that conversation, because I get the calls every day from the business owners who say, "I don't want to pay taxes here anymore, I'm not renewing my lease, I'm done with it."
Mr. Mayor?
So, I'm going to keep moving, because I'm out of time, and my colleagues have questions, and we got to keep going. I have two more very quick questions, and then we're going to, we're going to wrap up. Next question, is probably from Matt Lesh. Public Works capacity, do you, have you asked us for enough resources in this budget to do the things we've contemplated in a parallel path, so that we can deliver all those EIHs within 18 months, and so that we can hit the deadlines that are needed, and we can take into account the safe sleeping sites? I know Public Works is often almost a choke point, because we ask so much of you, and you're so critical to implementation, and it may not just be Public Works, but I want the council to be eyes wide open. If we have an expectation that we're going to go add 800 beds here, 500 places here, I don't want to be told halfway through the year, "It's actually going to take three years," because it's just really slow to check all the boxes. So, Matt, do you feel confident that we can hit the goals we're setting?
The construction goals for the projects that we have in hand, I believe we have the resources for them in this budget and in our staff. And we can escalate and modify wherever our staffing assignments are to meet other expectations as needed. I see Public Works as a choke point, but as an opportunity set. So, I think we can, we can leverage many parts of our organization, and many of our partner departments to meet the objectives of the council.
Okay, thanks, Matt. And I'll just expand that to every department. This is the moment, this is where we need to know. If the goals don't feel realistic, because you don't have the staffing levels, we may not be able to solve the problem, but we should at least have that out transparently and understand where the choke points likely to be, and are there options for ensuring we can parallelize this work and do it as quickly as possible? Because it's the single most important thing we're doing. We got to get thousands of people out of these unmanaged, unsafe, unsanitary, and now legally fraught, conditions. Okay, finally, where did it go? I had one more question, and now I've lost it. Oh, there it is. We've set here an occupancy rate for all temporary and interim sites across the board at 90%, but we're getting to a scale now where 90% means at any given moment, we could have 100 to 200 beds open. So can we just talk about optimization, and is it really the case across all of our interim and temporary sites, that we think a 10% vacancy rate at any given moment is necessary? Could we get that down to 5%? Because every bed matters, and at the scale that we're at, I would hope we could better optimize the system to not leave 100 to 200 beds empty at any given moment. So I'd like the staff to at least take a look at that. Does that seem reasonable?
Eric Soliwan, Housing Director, to answer your question, Mayor, yes, that seems reasonable.
Great. Thanks, Eric. Welcome to the team. Thank you. Good to have you here. All right. I went over my 10 minutes, apologies. Let's turn to colleagues. We've got a few more hands up for this section. We'll go to Councilmember Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, staff, for your answers. Just want to say a few things, of course, share my thoughts on this. I sympathize with Vice Mayor Kamai in regards to my hesitancy for the transition, the level of transition of Measure E dollars from affordable housing to EIH. I personally do not feel like we're being long sighted. I think we're looking for short temporary goals over the overall end goal of ending homelessness. I'm also concerned about the ongoing costs, right? And the ramifications of these costs as we build more EIHs and as we manage them. Because I think for most of the debate or discussion around this topic, the conversation's been focused on the development of EIHs, but not so much the overall price tag of the ongoing managing of the sites. And I think there was a number shared around 70,000 annually. And so I just, I have a few questions in regards to being compliant and our potential fines as it regards to the clean waterway. So, and I know that, you know, personally, in my opinion, it seems like the goalpost has moved recently. First, we were talking about the, being vulnerable to lawsuits from the Water District, now it's to private citizens. So originally, I heard that it was us being vulnerable to $60,000 a day fines. Is that, is that, can we get confirmation from either our legal counsel or from the city manager? Is it $60,000 a day fines exactly?
Hi, thank you for your question, Councilmember. What we've raised through this process is the risk of a citizen lawsuit, civil lawsuit, and the penalties that can be sought under the Clean Water Act would total $67,000 per day per pollutant. That's what can be sought. And, yeah. And if we face that kind of a lawsuit, we would, we would try to work out a resolution and stop that kind of bleeding and try to use the money, not to necessarily be paying for penalties, but to be doing cleanup. But it will, if we reach those kinds of commitments, it does limit the council's discretion then for the use of those monies.
I appreciate that. So doing quick math, I thought it was 60,000, not 67,000, but my original math totaled that to about $23 million a year, right? And so we're balancing $23 million vulnerability fine to this, or lawsuit to the city in comparison, 23 million, what?
It's per pollutant.
Per pollutant.
Per day. It's almost.
So it could be higher, but it could be lower.
Well, it's almost uncapped. I mean, our last settlement for a much smaller issue was $100 million, but it's, it's much, it's per pollutant.
But was that the same situation?
Pollution, pollution in the waterways, yes.
As we understand it, Councilmember, it's like if, for trash, it could be for fecal matter, it could be for propane in the water, it could be many different things and it's per, each one of those per pollutant, per day. That's what we understand from the city attorney's office.
Okay, all right. But there's, there's, have we sat down and worked with the Water District or the Water Board on what exactly would make us compliant? Does it take this level of investment? Because we are looking at, you know, we're talking about changing the status quo, but I'm pretty sure our residents don't think the status quo is closing their community centers and closing down their libraries.
Yeah, Kip Harkness, Deputy City Manager, can explain it, but just as a reminder, we have had three rejections for our last three permit submittals. But go ahead, Kip.
Thank you, Kip Harkness, Deputy City Manager. We have worked assiduously with the Water Board to try to understand how we can be in compliance at a much lower level. Again, we did three submittals. On the last submittal, I was personally involved with about a dozen departments doing the revision and explaining to them the level of existing investment that the council had made, both for this fiscal year and was projected to make in future fiscal years, the enormous work that we were doing around emergency interim housing, and all of the novel approaches that we could take within the existing budget. That proposal and that plan was rejected by the Water Board with a series of concerns and detailed complaints, most of which dealt specifically with the need to address the pollution that is a direct result of people living in our creeks and waterways and adjacent to storm drains. So those would be folks in RVs. And they specifically said that we needed to address all of the issues related to that within a 500-foot buffer, either by relocating people out of the area or by managing them within the area so that their trash and pollution did not enter the waterway. The only conceivable way that we understood to be able to meet that mandate was to make sure that people were A, either out of the waterways and ideally housed in some sort of improved condition, or within some form of managed encampments within the waterways that did not cause the trash to get into the waterway in the first place. In addition to that, part of the reason that we need to aggressively meet those mandates is right now and for the past five years plus, I think it may be a decade, we've had a credit that we receive for doing trash pickup. We spend about $9 million bucks a year doing trash pickup along the creeks. In, on June 30th, 2025, the credits that we receive for doing the trash cleanup, including all of the good work of Trash Punks and all of those other folks, will no longer count as credit toward Clean Water Act compliance. And that means that the only way to prepare to comply, starting July 1, 2025, with the Clean Water Act is if we have systems in place that prevent the trash from arriving in the creeks and waterways in the first place. These structural programs you're probably most familiar with in terms of some of the things that directly affect the storm sewer system, like the large trash capture devices and the small trash capture devices, which prevent things that have gone into the storm drains from going into the creeks. However, those do not deal with things that are on the creek beds themselves. And so the investments which we have recommended are around moving people out of those waterways, providing alternatives, or managing them with health and hygiene where they are within the creeks, are all intended to meet the Water Board's compliance and prepare for the June 30th change. One last thing, and I realize I have been long, is that we still have not heard from the Water Board whether they have accepted our plan or not. If they are willing to accept a plan with a lower level of investment or a delayed timeline on enforcement, we would certainly come back and revise our proposals based on that. But it is our obligation to always be in compliance, otherwise we put ourselves in the city at considerable risk.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that insight. And then I know that there's been comments about us accepting unanimously the mayor's budget message and previous votes on the budget. Just because we accepted those and voted for them, that doesn't mean we can't change things up at the end of this budget.
That is correct.
Okay, just wanted to confirm.
It's also clear though, I wasn't referring to the budget message votes exclusively. My point was that we have moved forward and made commitments and signed leases on land to do safe parking, to build interim sites. We have a lot of projects in the pipeline. We always can change direction and make difficult trade-offs, but I just think it's worth noting that it's not like we're making a hard pivot here. I think actually, for quite a few years now, going back to at least 2020, the council, so about four years or so, has increasingly embraced a multi-pronged strategy that includes interim housing and motel conversions and safe parking and looking at alternatives because I think what we've seen, pretty demonstrably as every city on the West Coast has seen, is that solely betting on building brand-new permanent affordable units is not in any way moving the needle on the number of people living in unsheltered homelessness and likely will not for decades at the current pace with their available resources.
Well, the permanent supportive housing and affordable housing, well, maybe permanent supportive housing, but affordable housing and Measure E wasn't solely for the homeless population, right? It was also for working-class families who were pushed out of the valley. And for that, it has been doing the job. And I'm hoping with the tenant preference program that we voted on early in this year, we could see more success with that. And finally, just got three seconds. I'm concerned, I don't know how many, I don't know if we have a point in time number estimate of how many people are in our creeks, but I imagine obviously when we abate them, they're going to come into our neighborhoods and we can't force them into these EIHs. So I'm hoping that we have a plan when we have individuals in shopping centers and in our neighborhoods, which we already do now, but I'm expecting there's going to be a lot more. Thank you.
Yeah, agreed. I think that's a serious risk. We will see what the Supreme Court says in a couple months, but let's go to Councilmember Batra.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to emphasize a point which you made about when we have the homeless people in encampments, we understand that those people have no, not much resources, that's why they became homeless. But that doesn't mean that they have lost any responsibility to be good neighbors. They could be camping next to a nice home, but if they will manage their affairs with the help of our PRNS and others properly, the amount of resentment which we are getting from the people would not be there. So from the time I come on the council, that's the message I've tried to bring it, that please have these housing advocates, all these nonprofits who come and speak on behalf of the homeless, work with them, they have a good communication with the homeless people, to educate them that if they want to be able to live in those neighborhoods in encampments, because that's all they got, they need to be good neighbors. And we should give them enough resources to make that point that they can live there as good neighbors so that our people who have compassion and willing to help, they're all getting to a point where they say, I don't care anymore, please take them out of here. And we can't take them anywhere because we haven't got any place. So I want to make that point very clear, that in whatever resources we are providing, have all the nonprofits and the housing advocates work with us to get these people to be living as good neighbors. If they're living in an RV, it's fine, live in the RV, but don't have trash all around it so that the people are getting offended, their ways are blocked, their businesses cannot be done. So I do expect that these homeless population to be cooperating with us so that we can actually provide the services which they need to be able to get back to be people who own the houses and live among us, who own the houses currently. So I want to make one point on that one. The second one, when we had the stormwater issue presented to us, that time there was only a placeholder that we were going to probably need, going to need about $25 million. We don't know the plan. And I was asking questions about that one, the answers were not available because the plan had not been fully developed. So I take in this budget that $25 million and the 500, providing 500 beds, is only a placeholder. Hopefully, this is going to be coming back when you fully define the program, it's going to be more beds than that and probably going to cost us less. One of the instruction which was given in the stormwater time and subsequently, based on the memo which Councilmember Dawn and I had written about pre-engineering homes, it was, instruction was given to evaluate all types of housing which can be built, interim housing, congregate shelters, and other possible means where we can get them built quicker in weeks rather than in months and years, and also be able to build them at a cheaper cost of, one particular example we gave was in $10,000 to $15,000. And I believe that that instruction is still out there, but the budget happens to precede that work. So I'm assuming, Kip, is that, that was given to your department to look at all different parts or different ways of finding cheaper, cheaper cost and quicker solutions. So I'm taking this $25 million which is proposed now and 500 beds, that is not a locked up, that's just a placeholder. Anything will be better than that.
Councilmember Batra, hi. I'm not Kip, we're both bald and facial hair, but here we are. I think that the answer, the answer to your question is the MBA that you and Councilmember Dawn called for, I think Councilmember Torres amended it into the budget message, that is, is going to be coming back and includes the scope of supportive outdoor sleeping, evaluation from our Public Works Department on the congregate shelter alternative option that you all included in that memo, some understanding of what more needs to be done. So it'll get us a good portion of the way further. I think we'll, in next month, we'll have the further information about the sort of basic services sites as well, which will probably be even a step removed in terms of the cost perspective. But all of those things are being worked out to come back to council.
It just happens to be that our budget timing and that memo are overlapping and in some way it's getting ahead. So I just wanted to highlight that point because we did specifically ask for that one and in the budget, we have to approve some money for this work. And that I'm taking to be the benchmark, low benchmark, everything is going to be better than that, I'm hoping, when the plan comes back.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dawn, did you want to, if you get a chance to speak?
Councilmember Batra, are you finished with your comments?
Yes.
Okay, that wasn't clear to me, I'm sorry. Councilmember Dawn, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. Omar, please stay up, I would have a few questions for you as well. Well, we talked about this over and over and over. I would imagine with nonprofit organization and we have discussion over discussion, this didn't come overnight. This unsheltered residence has been on for the last 25, 30 years. I'm just amazed how we become paralysis by analysis in a sense. Why is it other cities, you know, I travel down south and up north and small town to large town, I don't see they have the same homeless problems we do. Yet there's some are pretty bad and many, many cities don't have the same problem. And we keep saying, we can't, could have, would have, should have. And then we, and this isn't, I don't understand that. It's okay for us to go, oh, well, we'll shift the money to affordable housing, but yet, we're willing to allow people to die on the street. Is that humane? Is that okay if that was your brother, your sister, your mother, your aunt, your uncle? No, absolutely, the answer is absolutely not. And so we, you know, we keep saying, no, this is not going to work, this is not going to work. You know, always the PSH, permanent supportive housing. That costs us into millions and millions of dollars. Permanent housing worked when we only had a handful of unsheltered residents. Now we have waves and waves for every single unsheltered resident that we help, we've got two more coming, right? And, you know, and of course, the mathematical formulation was 1.77. Well, I've never heard anybody can split a person to like two-thirds. I counted as two. So let me ask you this. What type of structural setup that we have right now to address quickly and efficiently with our unhoused residents? I literally, every single day I get businesses that call me and said, look, for example, Rafa Falen in Monterey, that motor home, there are two or three of them in there with a car, naked lady, fecal matters, all over the, right in front of their business, they are an entertainment hall, they literally have to cancel multiple events because people come to their hall and first thing what they see is right there. And the last event, the person, the naked person stood right there in the middle of the driveway as an entry, took a pile. It's unacceptable in any way. So let, tell me, how is our city structurally set up to address the homeless? Because to me, it's a failure at this point. to me, it's a failure at this point?
I'm going to shoot for brevity. I will say that in the manager's proposed budget is resources to provide more waste removal, to your question about actually getting people's biowaste from their vehicles. So that's a, sort of a direct deploy as PRNS ramps up that piece. I think the entire conversation around basic services sites and supportive outdoor sleeping is calibrated for an accelerated approach to, to provide people with basics while we connect them to services. And I would say that one of the things, having also spent a fair amount of time in different cities, I would just say that we are in some ways a creature of our own success in Silicon Valley, where the, the vast wealth has a direct implication on what is a substantial number of people in deep, deep poverty. And that's a difference from other parts of the state. So just so you know, that's some of the reason. But I think the answer to the quick, quick and dirty is, or quick and hopefully not dirty, is, is addressing the RV pollution that the council is set to vote on, it's, and it's accelerating these sites in every district, including frankly, looking for sites in, in your district that you have brought forward.
Yes, and, and the San Jose Love Program, we offer up three, almost four properties, and then I'm looking to many other private entity that willing to, to offer up their properties. Now, the thing is, the bottom line is, a lot of these, what you're saying is, it makes sense, but we're saying, oh yeah, we, we got this biowaste hazard, and, and, you know, we keeping the sidewalk clear. No, we're not. Because I, literally, my staff have to spend enormous amount of time to report this over and over, in order to get some type of action. I reported, for example, there's a gentleman, his name is Christopher, right off of Talley King. His skin is dark as this monitor here. He walking around with mental illness. He's been there over a year. 988, you know, I, home first, the, the businesses, the windows getting broken into, and he's laying out there in the street, and he walking around cussing, and all kinds of craziness with, with his mental illness, but yet, zero action. So, you know, we, we keep going around in circle, we keep playing these words game and saying, oh yeah, it's all great, it's this, we respond. But the reality is, businesses are leaving. Residents are fed up. Children are feeling unsafe. We need to do something different. If we don't meet the Ninth District Court, we don't get the unsheltered people into shelter, we leaving them there to die, and we don't give them the dignity, the respect, the wraparound service and the healthcare they need.
And Councilmember, to your question, the, the something different is an aggressive action approach at, at reframing and getting after basic services sites, supportive outdoor sleeping sites, so that those people, because I'll tell you, I, I have looked at almost every one of those, those correspondents that come in, and often what will happen is, our beautify San Jose team has in fact gone out, or our Department of Transportation team has in fact gone out, not only cleaned it up, they have pictures, they cleaned it all up, but unfortunately, because of the scale and the lack of an alternative place for people to be, they end up right back on the sidewalk. So we're trying to aggressively get to that, those, those basic sites and the supportive outdoor sleeping.
Right, and I, this court stated very clear, we need, need shelter. Now, until we have the shelter, we can give the people a choice. Either you go into the shelter when you come to San Jose, or you can leave town. But then, only then, we can apply the existing laws that apply to all of us, right here in the city of San Jose and throughout the nation. And you were with me when we, we took a ride over there up Lumbrough. Remember Mike? Was, you know, I thought he was dead, I jumped out of the vehicle, assessed him. Well, Mike been there for almost two years. I went and bought him burgers, remember?
Yeah.
And you, you tell me, oh, called 988. We waited for half an hour and zero answer. We called home first, Mike was still out there. And he was digging for what? For money. Because someone apparently, you know, perhaps dropped a coin or two, and for years, he dug up the whole area with the trees and everything. So you, you can't tell me that we're doing something great. I'm, I'm just tired of hearing from the constituent, I'm tired hearing from businesses, and businesses are leaving. Right in District Seven, I've got like four businesses left, including Sun Powers, a big company, hundreds of jobs have been lost. And we continue to go, oh, excuse it, could have, would have, should have, no, let's take some action. You know what? Our citizens expect it, our business expect it, our visitor, our worker expect it. Let's do something about it. So how many departments you need to coordinate in order to take some type of action? Included code enforcement, including PD, Fire Department, hazardous waste, biowaste. Let's do something versus we keep talking about this and, and we're not getting anywhere. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dawn. I, I think we all share your frustration, I know staff does as well. Appreciate you giving voice to it, and I know we're going to continue this conversation and find ways to push ourselves to create alternatives to the streets, get people there faster, build a code of conduct that we can all adhere to, and continue to find resources to build affordable housing. Not to mention not defunding the other critical services like libraries and parks that are part of our neighborhood services, city service area. So thank you all for the presentation, for the important work you do, we'll continue the conversation on these topics soon. We're going to be moving on to our Transportation and Aviation Services, CSA. So we'll give staff a minute to transition.
Maya Street from the airport, Jessica Zink, Jennifer Sagan, Lam Cruz, and Ari and Colin from Department of Transportation.
I'm going to cover the presentation, I've been drafted to do that, so what I'd like to do is just get into the core services that we have for both departments. You can see them on the screen, but just to highlight, both Department of Transportation and Aviation have very important roles to play within the city, and both with travelers in and out of the airport, as well as those that use our transportation and roadway system. Moving on to program samples, these are just a, a sample of many of the things that both departments do. For a full list, you can refer to the proposed operating budget to get a more in-depth description of each one of our services. The Aviation Department and the entire city organization is very proud of the fact that San Jose Mineta International Airport is the city's highest rated service per the city auditor's most recent annual community survey, and the best mid-sized airport in the nation per both Wall Street Journal and Airports Council International. And we love the name of our airport, and we have no intention of changing it.
No.
Right, Mookie? Moving on to performance measures, we both have very important performance measures that drive everything that we do in the departments. I just want to highlight a few. For airport, the passenger satisfaction from Airport Council International's airport quality service surveys continue to be strong and maintains positive progress. The food and beverage and shopping is progressing, and we expect to improve as construction of new concepts is completed into early fall and through the end of the year. Passenger growth is relatively flat and projected to continue that trend for the next couple of years. For transportation, traffic safety regarding the number of injury crashes is consistent with prior year, and is expected to continue at that level. It is important to note that serious injuries and fatalities have decreased. The quality of the roads, as reported to the Transportation and Environment Committee in February, the, the pavement condition has increased with investment into our city streets, and further plan construction is expected to improve again this coming year. The city of San Jose is at our, is at our best local street condition in decades, and I just want to highlight that, that basically over the last 10 years, from 2014 to 2024, we've, we have raised our pavement condition index from 63 to now 73, and I believe there's probably no other city in the country that's achieved that type of success for a big city. Alternative forms of transportation, the city continues to deliver bike and pedestrian improvements, also an increased focus are in place in implementing, supporting, and exploring expansions of major transit system to encourage fewer single car, driver car Just to summarize the budget, the airport and transportation service area has an operating budget of $324 million as proposed. Airport and transportation have increases mainly due to cost of living. Position counts are proposed to stay relatively flat. Just want to point out that the Transportation Department is also representing our budget within the Environment and Utility Services, Service Area budget, so this is a portion of transportation's budget. For the airport, the fiscal year '24-'25 forecast includes a number of rate increases and contractual increases for services. These include utility increase of 15%, insurance premium increases, and Good Guard, which is a security services, 17% rate increase. The '24-'25 proposed budget overall is about a .8 million dollar increase, which includes the TSA mandated screening and the ARFF foam replacement, which Mookie will explain in great detail, and the $100,000 spending for destination marketing, among other things. On to delivery highlights, I'm going to just highlight a couple of the ones coming up in the next year. Both departments in this CSA place safety as our top priority, and it aim, and aim for efficient and well-maintained systems for the residents of San Jose. Transportation has a focus on encouraging multimodal transportation, which is supported by the repaving of 246 miles of streets on average every year. We focus on increasing urban canopy through planting of trees, and we're trying to achieve that by replanting over 2,000 trees every year. And we want to continue to operate and maintain public on-street and off-street parking facilities. SJC was named the best mid-sized airport in the U.S. this past year, and we will continue to aim to achieve the honor this year again. Our tagline, "Fly simple," will continue as we engage our passengers with exceptional customer experiences as they travel to the airport, which I experienced last week. Thank you, Mookie. Airport Department will continue with strategies and program to attract, retain, and expand our air services in our markets. For the proposed budget actions for the airport, some of the highlights are Airport Planning and Development Division staffing, which supports the airport's sustainability program, coordination of tenant improvements, and implementing the large capital programs. TSA mandated screening, specifically the airport work screening, which will move the city forward in meeting TSA mandated requirements for airport campus employees. And airport destination marketing, supports marketing and tourism managed by Team San Jose in partnership with OEDCA Department within the city, and includes the hospitality and stakeholders. For Department of Transportation, a new oversized vehicle regulation reserve will connect, which connects to upcoming manager's budget addendum, and is the city's approach to addressing oversized vehicles, overnight parking, school setbacks, and enhanced street sweeping. Automated speed enforcement pilot supports the traffic safety camera initiatives that the California Legislature approved for six cities to move forward under Assembly Bill 645. And then also a parking citation fine, which is going to be increased revenue, is a program that DOT will be returning to council in June for parking rate adjustments. And a summary of the services that both departments provide for DOT, achieving goals in the forthcoming Vision Zero Action Plan. Number two, focus on multimodal transportation, including regional rail, leveraging grants and reducing maintenance backlog. For the airport, we're going to focus on customer service and amenities, maintain competitive rates regarding airline cost per employed passenger, and when appropriate, continue with the precursor capital projects in preparation for a future terminal project. And finally, just on behalf of the CSA teams, we thank you and are available for questions you may have.
Great. Thank you for the report, a lot of good work being done. Let me turn to colleagues. Councilor Cohen.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for the patience in, as we waited to get to this, this CSA, but I appreciate the update, and obviously, this is a really important CSA for our city's safety and, and also for our city's economy, so thank you. Just a couple of quick questions. I wanted to ask first, and I know you talked a little bit, John, about it, but I want to hear a little bit from Mookie about what your thoughts are on the destination marketing spending. There's that portion there, but there's also money that we allocate to Team San Jose directly for marketing, and how is that going to work together, and how, you know, what are the, what are the goals for, or what are the thoughts about what we're going to be doing in the next year on marketing our airport?
Are you referring to the convention center Team San Jose work, or are you referring to work?
Well, it's sort of, it was mentioned that they're linked together, so I, I just wanted to, and I know that they are, and I think it's important for us to market San Jose as a destination, and wondering how you envision working with Team San Jose, and how you utilize the funding that you'll get for destination marketing?
Thank you, Councilmember Cohen. The partnership with Team San Jose has been, been in place long before my time here. The additional funding that we've identified in the budget for a partnership with Team San Jose is to get out and, and be at the Global Business Traveler Association conventions at IPWA, which is where we attract convention traffic to San Jose, as well as marketing the community, the, the number of flights that we have in and out of the service area, and then obviously positioning the airport as a contributor of economic impact to the region. So that's the partnership with, that's the plan moving forward with this additional $100,000 that's identified. The ongoing budget that we always use for social media advertising, for advertising of parking, demonstrating to our greater catchment area that San Jose is the airport of choice, "fly simple" as our, as our tagline is, we're, we're moving in a direction, as we continue to celebrate our 75th anniversary, is to double down on that effort, and making sure that either new residents or the catchment area, as it continues to grow, in the area of people's unfamiliarity, as the, as the other two airports continue to struggle with naming rights, we will always be the, the choice airport in South, South Bay, Greater, Greater San Francisco, South Bay.
Thank you, and I do really enjoy, really like the, the 75th anniversary sticker set that I received on Monday, so we'll need to share that with the rest of the council. The, the, I, obviously, you're also focused on revenue increases, bringing in more restaurants and businesses into the airport, and also other opportunities to bring advertising revenue. Any quick comment on that?
Yeah, so past experiences for me have always been, you know, I have a strong skillset in commercial revenue generation for airports specifically, and I've taken a key eye in this last, first, first eight weeks on the job, is to look at all of our revenue streams, making sure that we can stabilize our, our income as we kind of look towards this, I wouldn't call it a downturn, I think it's a stabilization of traffic. We're, we're at 12 million, we're projecting to be at 12 million, maybe just slightly above or below, and that's just indicative of, of some deeper systemic issues with aircraft deliveries from the airlines, and then, you know, demand for traffic in and out of the Bay Area, so a couple of different other challenges. So as those fluctuations happen, we always want to So as those fluctuations happen, we always want to focus and double down on parking revenues, on service fees, and providing the customers with food and beverage options that they want to be serviced with, and so that generates an additional increase in revenue for the airport. So making sure that the enterprise fund is self-sustaining is really, really important. We've gone through COVID, where we rebid all of our food and beverage, and now we're about to start seeing all of these new storefronts open up later this year. You know, Starbucks MB was the latest addition, and then we're addressing some infrastructure issues as we get some of the other concessions open.
All right, thank you. Just one question for you, John, and transportation. I really appreciate the work the department's doing on planting trees and addressing the tree canopy. I think you're utilizing a lot of the built-up money from mitigation fees for a lot of that work. Is that correct?
Yeah, Councilmember. It's a combination of those funds that we're receiving from development, that there was an audit, and we were asked to actually improve on the delivery of those funds, and we're using that to plant some trees. It also is from grants, and also from budget actions that the council has adopted.
Yeah, thank you. And, you know, I see these trees going up all over. It's great. Do we have a good plan and the funding for ongoing maintenance to make sure those trees survive? Because I always wonder after they get planted how well they're being cared for.
That's probably our toughest thing. So our practice is that we would like to see those, once planted, that there is three years of tree maintenance within, meaning to water them and to prune them properly so that they have a better chance of survival. That three-year period is the tough part. That doesn't always get captured in all the grants, but luckily enough, the most recent grant that we got from the CAL FIRE, from a federal source, is actually has funds in it for that particular thing, to plant the trees properly in the right locations, and then to maintain them. So we're able to do a lot of that with that grant.
Okay. Thank you. Those are my questions. Also, I just wanted to embarrass Judy Ross, since she's sitting here. I see her today, and I heard, learned that she's retiring in a couple of months, and this might be your last budget cycle, sitting in the room, so I want to congratulate you and thank you for your service.
Councilor Torres?
Good morning. Thank you so much for that presentation. I'm going to piggyback from, on Councilmember Cohen's comments on trees. We all love more trees, obviously, and so we are planting trees, obviously, in areas that need it the most, right? So in our under-resourced areas.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, the grant that I just mentioned actually requires us to address tree planting in those areas of concern. So that is exclusively, that grant actually directs us to do so.
Great, great, yeah, and I definitely want to thank your department, because I know the mayor and myself helped plant some trees out in the Cayo Willow neighborhood, and so, you know, Cayo Willow is a thriving, vibrant business district, but lacks a tree canopy, and so, yeah, we thank you for planting more trees in our most needed areas. So that's extremely important, and hopefully we can plant more trees. And before I go on to, before I ask my airport question, John, I'm looking at the $22 million in parking services. Is that folks paying for parking, like in our parking garages and on-street parking?
Are you talking about revenues received?
Yes.
That would be revenue received from either parking meters, depending on how, where you're looking, is it meters and parking garages?
All right, so in 2020, in 2022, 2023, it was almost $22 million?
Yes.
And what is that money used for? Can we move that money around for other, or is it just primarily for your department?
Previously, before there was a pandemic, there was surpluses in the parking fund. So we do our five-year look ahead. Right now, it's actually looking like we have a negative balance. So with, but that goes towards mostly the maintenance and operation of the parking garages, as well as parking compliance, and as well as the capital improvements that have to go into, for instance, new elevators that we're going to be doing in some of the garages, as well as other maintenance. We have in the past actually moved some surplus funds into other general fund activities, some of them supporting downtown, and some others supporting some of the other commercial districts, as well as other activities that council has approved in the past. Now, with the negative revenues that we're having, trying to recover pandemic, that's not as likely in the near term.
Okay, yeah, I know, I know, we've, obviously, that's why we're having these budget discussions, but if we need to, if we really need to take money from other places, would this be a good way to put money back into our general fund to offset our deficit?
When there is a robust parking revenue coming in, it has happened in the past, and I can only say that's what we have done in the past. Whether it can happen in the future, like, I can't speculate, but it's certainly something that we've done in the past.
Okay.
Councilmember, if I could jump in, I would say that, you know, John-
There you are, Jim. I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Can't see you behind John, so.
Yeah, I'm sure John can attest. The budget office is pretty aggressive, unfortunately, and if there are revenues that are not committed to a specific purpose, you know, we are definitely aggressive to see if we can use those to offset the general fund shortfall. So we do have, as an example, there's a little piece of the Construction Excise Tax Fund that typically funds the traffic capital program. We do have that as a transfer of $300,000 to the general fund this year and next year to help address our shortfall. We would have looked at the general purpose parking fund also, but given sort of what John had said there, just about the way the post-pandemic landscape looks, the health of that fund is just much, much diminished, and even the capital work that we would like to do is already being curtailed because of that. So there really isn't a significant amount of access resources in that fund, even though it is unrestricted for its use, taking that funding away there would definitely decimate sort of the downtown parking infrastructure funding.
Yeah, and I'd like to swing in, because obviously, being a budget director for over 10 years, that was a strategy we have used. You're absolutely correct. But I did push staff to look at those funds, because those are, there's only a couple of funds that could be considered general purpose funds where we can do that legally, and we did not feel it would be prudent to take anything from the general purpose parking fund as described, and then we pushed on the traffic capital fund, the Construction Excise Fund in particular, and that's all we felt we could take, given where the health of those funds are as well.
Okay, thank you. And so obviously, the, all the money that San Jose International brings, Norma Neta International Airport brings in is restricted, right? So everything that they raise-
It is.
-cannot go back into the general fund, right?
That's correct.
Okay. And so my last question is for Mookie. I've been wanting to say that for a very long time, by the way. So here I am. And this is just a question, so don't think I'm, you know, I'm supportive, because I've lived underneath the flight plan my whole life, living in downtown. Will getting rid of the curfew at the airport be more profitable for us?
The curfew currently ends, it starts sometime around 11:00 AM, 11:00 PM, sorry, and then-
To 6:00 AM, right?
Yeah, to 6:00 AM. We are a West Coast airport, and so most of our morning originators, as we call them, the morning push. Yes, some of the airlines would like to start a little earlier. It just helps with fleet capacity and utilization of the aircraft throughout the day as it goes from west to east. And then similarly, at the night-time hours, could there be an extra bank of flights that could come in a little later from the East Coast or originate from San Jose eastbound for red-eye flying a little later? I wouldn't say positively if that, if there would be a positive gain to the airport from the number of daily departures, the number of passengers. It would help with, you know, offering customers different fares and probably lower fares to fly out super early in the morning or late at night, but I can't guarantee that a carrier would take us up on the offer to fly more flights later. It's unpredictable, really.
Has there ever been a, I know that we've had the curfew for probably almost 20, 30 years, right? Since we, since we delivered the little chicks for the first time ever, over 60 years ago?
There you go.
Have we ever done a study to see if we adjust the curfew to maybe midnight or 5:00 AM? How much that would, because, you know, I would love to take my friends and family on, to, you know, the red-eye flights, but we can't because we have an 11:00 PM curfew, right? So when my family and my friends have to take a red-eye, they have to, they have to either do SFO or San Francisco Bay Area, Oakland International Airport, whatever it's called now, that other airport, right? So, you know, I would love to, and I know, it's just a question, I'm going to push a memo, but have we ever done a study to, if we adjust the curfew to see how profitable it is?
It is a good question to ask. I believe we could probably do some digging if we've got anything in our archives, if we've studied the point or the opportunity in the past. Or to answer your question differently, if there's a downside or an economic disadvantage of having that curfew in place, I haven't evaluated that yet, but we'll definitely review the documentation we have today, and we'll go back to your office.
Great. Thank you. That's it for me.
Thanks, Councilman. Councilman Foley?
Appreciate your comments, Councilmember Torres, but I have a couple residents who would really, really complain if we changed, extended our flight times to depart later in the evening. But sure worth studying, Mookie. And Mookie, welcome to your first study session over the budget. Thanks, John and Rob, for being here. I have a couple of questions regarding, I'll skip the airport because my questions were asked about that, but I do have some questions around transportation and safety in Vision Zero, sort of directed, as you might expect. So I see that the budget sets aside, John, money to implement AB 645. That's the automated speed cameras that we lobbied heavily for and are approved for up to 33. How many systems do we expect this to fund?
The way we interpret, thank you for the question, the way we interpret the legislation is that means 33 separate cameras, so that we would be deploying 33 cameras that operate in one system, and this would be, of course, done by a vendor that we would then, we were going to procure that system. So it's all 33 connected to one system, which will do the ticketing and the reporting for us for that. So 33 cameras is what we're interpreting.
Okay, so the proposal is to deploy them all at once, the 33?
We're still working that.
Because we have a five-year time limit, right?
We're going to work on implementing all 33. I'm not sure we'll get them all out on the street, 33 at one time. We may have to phase that a little bit, but right now, we're working towards 33.
Okay. Because we're talking about the budget, then, you're, it doesn't mean you're going to install the 33, but the budget is, takes into consideration all 33?
Yes.
Because we do have that five-year time limit that I'm concerned with.
Yeah, as soon as you install one camera, that five-year time limit starts.
Right.
So we, it's our intention to get them all approved budgetarily, and, can we talk about?
No.
Well, we, maybe in a day, we'll have an announcement that we were pretty lucky to get another federal grant for this, but I'll wait for that official announcement to come out.
Okay, John, that was my next question.
Yeah.
Are we pursuing grants for the difference? And it sounds like you are.
I'll say yes.
And let's just all send out positive thoughts that that is a good announcement tomorrow.
Yeah. I want to note that this fall, one of the requirements of the legislation is that we return to council with an impact report that actually will identify the locations and all the equity issues and the elements that went into decision-making to locate all these cameras. Right now, what we're doing is doing the speed surveys on all those major roadways that are the ones intended for this, so that we can understand what data is behind this, because we need to know where the crashes are, where the speed is, what's going on on the roadways for us to locate that. And it's specified within legislation how we're going to be, what criteria we're going to use to locate those cameras. We have to come back to council for approval of an impact report before we go out to bid for the vendor.
Okay, and that's coming to us in the fall?
That's this fall.
Okay. I'm assuming you're looking at our Vision Zero corridors to determine as a starting point to see which have the most crashes and serious crashes occurring there.
That's one of the criteria.
And I know that many of our residents would love us to have these speed cameras at all of our schools, but we have really far too many schools for the 33 cameras to be implemented, and really, you're not talking about one camera at an intersection, because it has to pick up the traffic from all intersections, so are you talking four cameras per intersection or two, or some strategy?
Well, likely, likely, these are going to be not necessarily at intersections, but in between intersections to capture the speeds that occur between controlled intersections.
As drivers' pickup speed.
Right.
Got it.
We do have red light running cameras that we're going to be deploying, hopefully, soon, next year probably, but those are intended to be at intersections where we would then capture someone violating a red light by running it. That's a different program, but same idea for safety.
Okay, and since you brought that up, the red light running, those, the red light running cameras, I know we call them something else.
No, that's what we call them.
Okay, well, that's what I'm using. Have we seen a decrease in red lights being run?
Yeah, we haven't deployed them yet, and we only, this is only a pilot program that was approved by council. So we have four approaches, so that could either be one intersection coming four ways, or maybe two intersections with two ways. We haven't deployed them yet, but other cities that have, have seen some reduction in that. It really needs to be done on a larger basis to get real reliable data. Our four approaches isn't going to give us that kind of data, but in general, they've seen, those cities that have deployed it have seen some improvement.
Okay, thank you. The next question is about our Safe Routes to School program. We all want to make sure that our children are safe walking and rolling to school. It's critical. And I see that you're requesting an additional FTE to fund that program, the Safe Routes to School program. Can you tell me what, or tell us what that program will be working on in the future to improve safety around our schools? How will it be, how will it work?
Right. Thank you. So this program was initiated, unfortunately, due to a pretty terrible fatality that occurred near a school now a couple of years ago, and council directed us to really focus in on improvements directly around schools. We were doing it everywhere, but now we've got an additional program just to focus on the safety of students walking, riding, or vehicles to school as well. So what we're doing, we've surveyed, or at least we've attempted to survey every school in the city, 260 of them. We did not get responses from all of them, but we're working through that as well. We're actually already doing some improvements of crosswalks at some of the schools. I think we've done about 800? No, not that quick. About, I think we've done about 100 so far. Yeah, and then it's also going to include expanding that with some additional safety audits with each school as well that is interested in doing that, so that we can really pinpoint what's important to them and around those schools. We're going to try to do five or six of those every year to try to get that done, and then that will identify additional improvements that we want to do, whether it be, you know, beacons or enhanced crosswalks, or if it needs to be something in addition to that. We're also working with the police department as part of the program for their crossing guard program, as well as if we need enhanced enforcement around those schools. So it's a pretty broad reach with 260 schools, but we're taking each one, probably about 35 of them a year, and going through that process with them.
It's really important, and I know, sitting on Vision Zero, that we have a real lack of crossing guards, and that we need more crossing guards to operate at the intersections that we have approved, and already know that it has the traffic flow that warrants- it has the traffic flow that warrants crossing guards. And I also know that Captain Spears, I don't know if he's in the room, um, but Captain Spears is working on a proposal actually from a group of students at Valley Christian who's come up with an idea on they, that they think might be viable for expanding the crossing guard programs. They actually unveiled that next week, I think. So that, uh, I look forward to the details of that because we do need crossing guards at a lot of our intersections, but we also need our parents who sometimes drive unsafely around their schools, um, to drive more safely and be more thoughtful. It, it's not just residents trying to get to work. It's frankly, anyone's listening to this, parents, we know, we know it's parents who are rushing, running late. So, uh, I, I, anything we can do to increase the Safe Routes to School program and, and highlight, um, deployment of traffic enforcement units at our schools. I know that's highly effective at our schools. Um, so I, I really appreciate that. And I see my time is almost up, but I'm gonna ask a question about vehicle abatement. Uh, I know we're increasing, uh, investment in vehicle abatement. Are we increasing, getting our residents, is their satisfaction rate going up?
Yes, if you, well, let me back up a little bit. We did spend the last year remaking the vehicle abatement program and especially the, the communication vehicle, San Jose three-one-one with those residents that are doing the reporting and then us reporting back to them. So I, you know, really wanna thank Khalid Tofflick and his IT staff, as well as our team, to actually really remake that whole system. So that actually just went live, uh, maybe a month ago. So I, I don't know if I can give you the, that we've gotten, uh, you know, a, a real great response yet number. We, we do know that over this last year, when we were trying to put some of this in place, we were seeing some increases in satisfaction. I think it's gonna really, uh, have to play out a little bit to be able to see how well we're doing. With that better three-one-one, we're also doing more enhanced vehicle abatement activities out there as well, where we have kinda changed our criteria to capture some of those gray area vehicles that were still, uh, prove up, proving to be difficult in terms of, um, acceptance in, in some of the streets, but there was still something that we needed to do to actually investigate and triage that, determine if it was something that we needed to abate. We've changed some of that criteria, so we're, we're making progress in that whole aspect. And I think with both of these changes, both the, the communication with reporters and what we're doing in the field, I think it should come back with a, a higher level of satisfaction, but it's just gonna take us a little time.
Okay, uh, thank you so much. And finally, I, not a question, just a statement, that , uh, Vision Zero is important and critical that we get to reduced fatalities on our streets. And we do so by education, we do so by infrastructure, we do so by enforcement. So because this is a budget conversation, I just wanna throw it out there that these are primary things that we should be funding and always looking for grants to not leave any money on the table that is available to us in, in the format of a grant. So with that, I will leave it at that and get off of my high horse right now. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilwoman Foley. Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna be getting on my high horse. Uh, uh, thank you all for your, your hard work on this. And, uh, as you know, transportation safety, uh, is a major priority for my district, given that three of the five most dangerous, uh, roads in the city are in District Five. Um, so it's great to see so many investments in street safety. I wanna thank, uh, Councilmember Foley for her leadership, um, on that cause as Chair of Vision Zero. I'm also happy to see the additional staffing to elevate feasibility and need for traffic improvements near our schools, uh, which I plan to follow closely. Just had a really quick question regarding the elimination of the front desk. Support position detailed on page seven hundred and forty-two. Just wanted to ask, uh, is this a layoff or is this person be, being reassigned, uh, to another position in the city? Page seven hundred and forty-two.
I, yeah, right. So it's not a layoff. These are, these were contracted positions anyway.
Oh, I see.
So we're moving them around and still utilizing some of that, but it, it was a contract positions that, that was actually staffing our, you're talking about the eighth-floor front desk?
Yeah. Okay, so these are not members of our bargaining units?
Well, I, I, I think this position is vacant. I think you were probably backfilling that position with some temporary staff, but I think the actual FTE is a classified position that's currently vacant.
Okay, it's vacant. Okay.
All right. Thank you. That's all, that's all the questions.
Councilmember Bartra?
It would be helpful. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, I think there are two areas where we're gonna be able to meet the expectations which our residents have. In order to get more revenue, there are two efforts only available to us, which is, one, making this city a business-friendly city, so that we can get more businesses here and more jobs. And the second one is making San Jose a destination city. So we seem to be talking about that one. Do you see a quantitative plan to making this city a destination city and year by year, what we may see as the investment and what the return on it? If we have such a plan, or right now it's just a concept that we're gonna make it a destination city?
Was that directed at me for the airport?
Sir?
Well, I'll, I'll take that on. Yes. So how do we, we clearly have a, a strong foothold on business traffic, right? So we've, we've been known for, for decades as a, a very strong business market. Um, how we bring those businesses back and change or and adapt to providing investments for, uh, growth in, in business traffic and, and businesses in our community is, I'll leave that up to other departments to, to formulate what those look like. Um, in terms of a destination city, I've had the fortunate pleasure of living in, and, and working for airports in, uh, other cities that have, um, strong local attractions, generations of, of, uh, of being known as a destination city. San Antonio, for instance, has a strong Mission District. Uh, the River Walk is a, is, is something that is a true gem for, uh, for that city. I recently visited Asheville, North Carolina, and the Biltmore Estate is something that is an amazing asset to that community. So, um, we, I wouldn't say the word struggle is the right word, but we do want to figure out what is our defining imprint for people to come to San Jose and visit San Jose. We are obviously looking at twenty-twenty-six and all the tourism that is coming with the individual, uh, sporting events, uh, but those have an impact of a very short period of, of, um, visitation. And how we lure people to the valley versus, um, other communities in and around the, the Northern California region is, is a, is a challenge for us, and we'll work with Economic Development to define that footprint and, and make sure we market it very, very well.
I think it, because I think it's gonna be a multi-year effort.
It will be.
To get to something meaningful. We'd like to see that presented every time we have an opportunity to do that. And so, second question is gonna go to John. Uh, John, in terms of the traffic safety, especially around the schools, I'm gonna follow up on some stuff which Councilmember Pam Foley asked about, and we continue to get a lot of requests for analyzing the issues around schools or some major streets. Do you have enough resources to be able to respond to those studies which are needed, to be able to make those happen? Uh, because the number of requests which are there or continue to be there, uh, at least to be able to go back to them and say whether there is a problem or there isn't a problem, or what could be the different solutions available for that. So could you comment on that one because I'm very concerned about that area?
Yeah, that's a tough one. The, um, as, as in our overview, the highest priority for both of our departments is, uh, you, si- system and user safety, and, uh, that includes, uh, people trying to access schools with and without vehicles. The, the issue we have is that the same team that is, uh, responsible for the Vision Zero program, which is really focused around our largest and our largest roadways, which have most of the incidents, the crashes and fatalities, also does all of our neighborhood traffic and neighborhood managed, uh, traffic management program that, uh, works with each one of your offices on requests that come from the homeowners and/or businesses in those areas, as well as the new, um, Safe Routes to School program. So the, there's one group in my department that is responsible for all of that. So, um, it is resource-challenged. We were able to, to try to resource it with this budget and previous ones, but it is still the same team that's trying to do all of that work. So, uh, I'll always tell you that we can do it, but there is definitely a, a resource challenge, just in a matter of the amount of, uh, traffic inquiries that we get. We, we respond to about thirteen-hundred speeding and/or volume issues each year coming from your offices or your constituents, and that doesn't include the, the, uh, Vision Zero program work. So that's a lot of work and a lot of engineering work and a lot of analysis has to go into each one of those inquiries, whether it's speeding or other, uh, traffic safety inquiries. So it is a lot, and then with this, uh, uh, focus around schools, it just added to that, but with, uh, I'm really pleased that the council recognizes those issues are really top priority in both, you, both the overall city as well as your council districts and have provided resources. It is a matter of just being able to get it all done in a timely fashion. So we're working on it, but, um, thank you for the support. It's just a matter of having some patience for us to get through it all. Let alone the, uh, sideshow issues that are also causing both the police department and us a lot of extra work, just trying to, trying to sort out how we can actually support that sort of work. And that's just about in every one of the council districts. It's really causing quite a bit of both safety as well as quality of life issues for us. So it's a lot that's coming through one of, just one of my divisions.
Yeah, and, and my district gives you fair share of those as well, so.
Yes, you're all very, very involved in that.
Okay. It's, so please do whatever you need to do to be able to improve the response times on those studies when they're requested and, uh, recommendations. Uh, the second one, you have the Safe Routes to School program and which you have some amount of funding. Are we gonna be accelerating anything in this budget or we're gonna be, uh, that five years? Because the concern about the schools due to some of the incidents which have happened, I think is arising where no, thirty-five, whatever you intend to do in a year investigations, doesn't seem to be satisfactory. Okay? So we need to get something more there.
Sorry. Yes. So we did establish a budget through, I think it was, it was last year or mid-year budget to actually be able to begin that program, and we were able to use some surplus funding that was, uh, we received from the Valley Transportation Authority Measure B program to be able to do that. We were able to, our payment program, because it achieved seventy-three payment condition index, we were able to flex now some of those funds into traffic safety. So we were able to get started on that Safe Routes to School. We will need some additional funding. We're gonna look to that same source in the next couple of years, but we have enough for this, this fiscal year to, to do the work that we've identified. We're looking at five years to get to every one of those two hundred and sixty schools, so we will need some additional funding in some of the out years, and we're gonna tend to look at that same source if available or, or other ones. But you are right, we are gonna need some additional funding in an out-year budget.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna leave you with the comment that the anxiety about the residents near the schools, uh, safety around the schools is pretty high, you know? And so anything we can do to get that message across, what we are doing, what we are likely to be able to do, will help a lot in terms of calming the, uh, we have traffic calming measure, we need here resident calming measures to be able to tell them what we need there. Okay? Thank you, John.
Thank you, Councilmember. Coming over to Councilman Duane.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the report, staff. Uh, Mookie, thank you for coming to join the San Jose Airport. Do you have any plan in the future to incorporate, um, arts from our local artists, um, onto the airport area?
Um, so most communities I've worked with always have a public arts program. I actually have a meeting with the team, uh, later this month, uh, to introduce, um, the staff from, from, uh, the Economic Development Group that does the public art program. Um, currently, there is an outstanding balance that we, um, we contribute based on the policy. You know, whenever we have capital programs that qualify, I, I believe it's one percent or one and a half percent, uh, of, of the capital project that has contributed to public art. Um, as we look to partner with the team, um, that, that produces that, that reviews the artists, that does the installations, um, we, it's, it's always hard to identify space to put public art in that doesn't conflict with flow of traffic or is an impedant. So, uh, we'll, we'll always work with them to look at that. It's one percent. Um, and so we will, uh, definitely look at the, the outline. Most cities I've worked with, and I haven't learned it yet, Councilmember Duane, but, um, guidance on, um, local art versus national art versus international artist, uh, those things I don't get involved with, but I do get to at least get some influence into where the art is placed and public visibility and, and making sure that it's, uh, contributing a piece to the airport. Be nice.
Uh, thank you. I, I would hope we, we always look at our local artists. Um, as I travel, you know, throughout the world or within the United States, I, I find some of these airports are very interesting, how they display the arts and it, and it's obviously, um, take the stress out of being at the airport, and I hope we can incorporate that. I have a question for, uh, John. Um, thank you for all the work that you do. As Vice Chair of Vision Zero, um, and, um, Councilmember, uh, Foley, we very supportive of the AB six forty-five. And I know that, for example, on the Capital Expressway corridor belonged to the county. Is there, or, is there a possibility we can have, um, the speed camera on, on Capital Expressway? You know, recently we also have a fatality there as well.
I'm gonna say, uh, no, because the county was not included specifically in that legislation. I don't wanna ever rule it out, but right now the legislation was just specifically six cities. So I don't think we could do that unless there's some modification. Now, I, I am fully anticipate that these speed cameras are going to be successful in how they are, uh, trying to moderate some of the speeds and that there would be an expansion of that program, but right now I don't think we're allowed to, to put it within the county jurisdiction.
Thank you. And regarding the, uh, red light running camera, if, if you will, and I know it worked pretty darn successfully for so many years in Fremont. I myself, when I go in Fremont, I know that if you, you know, pass that line, you, you're, you're gonna get a ticket. And I think the sooner we can implement that would be, um, great. And recently, I, I, I stopped by, um, the, uh, the Lady of Peace over there off of, uh, Great America Parkway, and on the side of, of, of the, the Lady of Peace statue, there's a road called the Mission College Road. And they use these little tiny strip that remind people to slow down. And, and they're, they're, they're very small. It's not even a speed hump or, or speed bump or, or those, um, circular, um, rays, um, to slow people down, but it's just a little strip. And I, and I thought it's, it's extremely efficient, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't... think the cost would be too much instead of putting, you know, speed humps or speed bump, because it costs. And these strips would be easier implementation and more cost-effective throughout the city. So, if you can, you know, being me, I stop in the middle of the road in the middle of the night, and I come out there and I drove over it and I took a look at it, and I kept it in my mind and, you know, just want for you to take a look at it.
We'll take a look at it. Yeah, you're talking about in the city of Santa Clara over on Great?
Well, yeah, I believe in Santa Clara, it's right off of.
That's okay. We steal good ideas from anywhere we can.
It's right there on Mission College Boulevard, right next to, behind Lady or the side of Lady of Peace. So, take a look at that if you don't mind. I appreciate it, and thank you so much for all your hard work. That's all I have.
Just as a time check, we're 11 o'clock. We're scheduled today till noon. We asked everyone to block tomorrow from 9 to noon. We are behind schedule a bit. We do have, we also have capital budget improvement program, so we still have a ways to go here, so I'm just going to ask everybody to try to be succinct. We'll see how much more we can get through today. It would be great if we could get through strategic support today. We do need to leave a few minutes for public comment at the end of the day here. Okay, Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I want to follow up on Councilmember Torres's suggestion on looking at different opportunities for the airport in terms of what might be flexible in terms of flight patterns. I know that, you know, there are no direct flights to the East Coast, and there used to be, and so I think that as you're trying to evaluate, discover, or whatever, I think that even on a temporary basis, I know that as we prepare for big special events in the future like FIFA and the Super Bowl, I wonder if that might be an opportunity to take a look. You know, there's enough time from now until then that perhaps maybe during a short window of time, that direct flights, you know, to different places would be much more readily available. I think it's attractive, especially when they're bringing in so many people into the area for these huge special events, and I think that we ought to take as much advantage of it. So, I just kind of wanted to add that in a little bit. I know that residents don't like to hear the noise and all of that, but I think that if we can sort of like narrow it to a window, it might be helpful to at least experiment and see what may work, what, you know, what the airlines may want to modify, if at all. So, it might be a chance to increase our revenue for the airport. So, I just wanted to tag along Councilmember Torres on that. The other thing I wanted to mention is really a thank you, John, for the collaboration that you've done with the schools. I know I serve as the liaison to the Schools and Cities Collaborative, and it is the number one issue in terms of safety and walking to school and biking to school, and the safe routes to school is critically important. I really want to thank the entire staff who have been just wonderful in terms of working with the school community and parents and all of that, because it is the top priority, and it's a high priority for me, and I think that in terms of your review of 35 schools every year, if the schools are within our districts, I think that if you let the council member of that school know, we will help you as much as possible to ensure engagement, because I think that it's on people's minds. Safety is on people's minds, and I know that, you know, we're all in a rush, but, you know, we've learned that you don't need to be that much in a rush, and there are consequences to what happens. And I want to thank Chair Foley and Vice Chair Abiendon in Vision Zero, because I think that what you're doing is tremendously helpful for the community, and I've seen it in my own district, so thank you so much for that. I guess I don't really have a question. I just wanted to appreciate the work that the staff is doing and everyone's doing. I will say that in addition, I learned that for tree trimming, you joined with, Transportation had joined with Parks and Rec, and were able to get a more advantageous purchase and contract for tree trimming. So, you know, anytime departments can kind of like cross over and leverage, I think that that is a very smart thing to do, so I appreciated that coming up. So, thank you so much for all your work, and that's it.
Great, thank you, Vice Mayor. I'm going to also try to just touch on a few things very quickly here and run through them. On the Vehicle Abatement Program, page 735, I may have missed it, but I, and that's of the proposed operating budget, of course. I didn't see goals outlined for vehicle abatement response, resolution, customer service thresholds. I know we're still going through this process of reimagining that response, but it'd be helpful to kind of baseline things like response time, resolution rates, customer satisfaction rates, and understand how we, where we expect to be. I think some of that is in our 3-1-1 service, but do we have clarity around what we're aiming for?
I'm sure we do. I don't have those at the top of my head, but I think that would be something that if it's not shown in that section, but it's in the 3-1-1 section, we probably need to put them in both. I'm pretty sure we have goals for the customer service on it, just don't recall what they are on the top of my head.
John, maybe we can do a follow-up email to the mayor and council?
Right.
Okay, great, yeah, because we have an additional $459,000 investment there as we reimagine and work on this vehicle abatement program. I just want to know what we think we're going to get for it.
I'm sorry, Major, just to clarify, that is a, that's not new fund, that's a continued funding that expires at the end of this year, so it's not an additional capacity.
Oh, was that one-time?
It was one-time last, it was funded two years ago.
So, we're funding it on a one-time basis once again?
So, we are, I think this is ongoing now.
Oh, we're moving it into ongoing? Okay, so we're making that an ongoing commitment? Great. Point stands. We'd love to know what the impact we expect to be. Is, okay, $200,000 for red light running pilot, page 736. We allocate, as I understand it, a million dollars to this pilot in fiscal year 2223, so a couple of years ago. Seems like it's taken a long time to implement. Is that fair? And what have been, if it is, what have been the barriers to implementing the red light running pilot?
You're right. That's correct.
Okay.
The barriers that we have encountered is really just in the procurement, so we've been trying to get through a procurement for that for quite a while now, but I believe we're ready to go. We're looking to implement right after the first of the year, early '25. After we have to procure, but it's been stuck in a procurement process.
Yeah, it's concerning to me that something that frankly is pretty standard in a lot of cities, red light cameras, that, you know, that would seem to me to be something that should not take a two-to-three-year process to implement, so I think it might be an opportunity for us to look at a process improvement around really where in procurement is that hung up and how can we streamline the process? It's not like we're asking folks to do something that's never been done before or is super complex, as red light cameras, tickets are standard all over the country. Okay, maintaining pavement. So, hey, that's great news. Lot of progress on PCI. That's awesome to see. Well done. Thank you to the voters for Measure T. Thank you to staff for using the dollars well. When do we run out of Measure T dollars, and what is our plan for not going back to 63 PCI?
The Measure T funds, which make up a very large portion of our pavement budget, probably 35% to 40%, will run out at the end of fiscal year '28, so we've still got a couple of years to go. That will make a big dent in the amount of pavement we're doing every year, but this whole program was to get caught up from years and years and years of just maintenance backlog that had built up. We're still going to have Senate Bill 1 funds that are gas tax. We're still going to have the VTA's Measure B funds, which are pretty significant, so somewhere in the neighborhood of where we are, it's 50% or so, 50% to 60% of our budget we're still going to have.
Just to put a finer point on it, we're going to, we're up to 63 to 73. Hopefully, we incrementally come up a bit. We're going to kind of plateau. I guess my question is, at the end of fiscal year '28, is our expectation that we will be able to maintain the level of average PCI we achieve, or will we?
We are going to start sliding back. Yeah, we're going to, we are going to need some additional funding. We're projecting out now to determine what that means, but when we do the, when we use the Measure T funds, we were using that in the worst, on the worst roads as directed by the voters.
Yep.
And we used our highest cost resurfacing program that should get us 10 to 15 years of really good pavement for those roadways. But we have a very big system, and it is going to start to recede unless we can find some additional funding to keep it at that level.
Okay. I would just like to ask that staff keep the council aware of that and bring us options over the coming years. We don't, I mean, I know it's four years out, but that's only two election cycles, and not to say that we necessarily will go back to the voters on it, but when we talk about cost of living, one of those hidden costs that's such a burden on working families is the fact that when we don't properly maintain our roads, we shift a couple hundred dollars a year worth of unnecessary wear and tear onto them, on their vehicles, and I just, I think it's something we should be aware of. We've worked so hard to get to that level, and we don't want to just see it start deteriorating in a few years. Okay, almost done here on my questions. You know, on the number of, there's this metric in here, number of injury crashes per thousand population, interesting metric. It's, I think, listed as a performance measure. I would personally call that an outcome. It's not something, we don't directly control how many crashes there are. We do things to influence it, but that's an outcome, right? We want to get to Vision Zero of, you know, no crashes, no injuries, no deaths. Okay. What I am interested in is if we're setting goals, or could start to set goals around the red light cameras deployed, the level of staffing in the traffic enforcement unit, the automated speed enforcement camera deployment, and frankly, the number of enforcement actions, the number of Vision Zero projects completed. It just feels like we should be focused more on, if performance should really be the programmatic level initiatives we have some control over that we're implementing, where we're hitting milestones, that we hope will reduce the number of crashes per thousand, because it's kind of been bouncing around 2.2 to 2.5 since 2015. So, anyway, I just, I want us to focus on things where we can actually have some accountability for our delivery of a program versus, and then we hypothesize how it'll move the outcome, and then if it doesn't, maybe we need to invest in different programs.
I believe we agree. Some of these performance measures don't move a lot year to year, so we tend to agree. And I, my understanding is we're going to, at a citywide level, we're going to be investigating new metrics over the last, next couple of years to actually meet some of the descriptions that you're looking for there.
Okay.
Correct, Mayor, and yeah, I think the Transportation Aviation Services is one of the last three CSA's that will be revamped as part of the three-year cycle to look at all the performance measures across the organization.
All right, great. Well, I just gave you a starter list of some things to consider. And, Mookie, in the interest of time, I'm just going to say, we've got a great airport. Keep it going. I had questions for you, but we can take them offline for a check-in at some point, but once again, welcome to the team, and really proud of our best mid-sized airport designation from the Wall Street Journal this year. Let's go for that once again. Thank you all for the report. Great questions from colleagues. We're going to move along to our next CSA. We're on to environmental and utility services. And I'll ask, as we do the transition, I'll ask staff to do their best to streamline the presentation. We're going to see if we can get strategic support in here before noon.
So, Carrie, go fast on whoever's doing the presentation. Got it? Okay. Good afternoon. Carrie Ramenow, Director of Environmental Services. I'm joined by Lori Mitchell, Director of the Energy Department, and John Risto, Director of Transportation, and I think Kip is working his way down as well. Oh, I didn't turn all the way around. Thank you. So, this CSA provides a lot of the core services to the city. From the Environmental Services Department, we provide potable water delivery, recycled water management, recycling and garbage services, stormwater management, sustainability and environmental health, and wastewater management. The Energy Department's core services, providing clean energy to the community, energy customer support, energy community and programming, and from a transportation standpoint, sanitary sewer maintenance and storm sewer maintenance. Our program samples for the EU, for the environment and utility services include, from Environmental Services, include municipal water system operations and maintenance, South Bay Water Recycling Operations and Maintenance, residential solid waste collection services, storm water policy and compliance, San Jose/Santa Clara Treatment Plant Operations and Maintenance, laboratory services, regulatory compliance and safety, and environmental compliance and safety. From an Energy Department, energy hydro power supply, energy conventional, energy supply, energy regulatory compliance, energy risk management, local energy programs, and energy marketing and public affairs. See why you're called the Energy Department. Transportation is sanitary sewer system maintenance, storm sewer operation and maintenance, and street sweeping. Our performance measure dashboard, and we're working on updating these this calendar year, but many of these show relatively consistent activity. DOT continues to effectively maintain sanitary sewer system to keep the number of sanitary sewer overflows below two per 100 miles. EST's calculation of trash reduced from the storm sewer system will change as credits given per the municipal regional permit are no longer counted in the out-years. From a budgetary standpoint, there are some adds for each of the departments, and we have cut some vacant positions, leading to a final tally of 592 positions for EST, which is why I'm doing most of the talking, 56 in the Energy Department and 164 in DOT. Some highlights from our service delivery include leading on climate action through policies, measures, and programs that reduce greenhouse gases and ensure inadequate long-term water supply, managing the city's wastewater, storm water, recycled water, and potable water utility infrastructure in compliance with regulatory requirements, managing programs to collect, process, recycle, compost, and dispose of solid waste to maximize diversion from landfills at competitive rates, and provide residents and businesses with carbon-free energy options at competitive rates. Some of our proposed budget actions include preparing for purified water and regulatory leadership in water. Like many city departments, adding resources necessary to meet obligations of the municipal regional permit will, EST will specifically propose to add inspectors for stormwater treatment measures and private land drainage areas. Realizing large costs associated with wastewater treatment, particularly our chemicals and hauling of dried biosolids, we are presently transitioning to mechanical dewatering. Those costs are also reflected in our budget proposals. We're also proposing a flow study. San Jose performs a flow study for wastewater every 10 years to apportion the cost to user classes and tributary agencies. And the environment, the Energy Department is proposing $5 million in one-time non-personal funding to support programs identified in the program's roadmap that was approved by council in April. So, in summary, we, San Jose Clean Energy continues to provide the community with clean energy service options at competitive rates and local programs that reduce greenhouse gas emissions and promote equity. The costs associated with ongoing wastewater treatment to protect the bay and community are rising due to inflation, aging infrastructure repair, and equipment replacement, changing treatment processes, and more stringent environmental regulations. In partnership with Valley Water, investment in water supply projects will continue San Jose's progress towards drought resiliency. Sustained investment in climate-smart San Jose will continue to lead the city towards our carbon neutrality by 2030 goals. An increased investment in storm collection system maintenance and new inspection services is necessary to meet regulatory requirements. And with that, we're available for questions.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate the substantive and speedy presentation. We'll go to Councilor Candelas.
Uh, thank you, Carrie. Um, I, I appreciate, um, the expediency as well. Um, it's very nice to have a less than five-minute CSA presentation on the budget. But, um, I, I guess my question pertains to the, the stormwater permit obligations, which how we all know was fairly onerous this year, and specifically to the storm service, the storm sewer service rate. Um, you know, where does this charge go to? Uh, it's my understanding that this goes to our stormwater pollution control and permit compliance, correct?
Uh, I think you all start and then I'll ask Nora to share if I, fill in any gaps I may have missed. Um, the, uh, the storm sewer, the storm sewer charge is, um, is a, is related to parcels. So the money we use per Prop 218 needs to benefit those parcels. Um, there are many change, there have been many changes to the municipal regional permit over the years, many of which are not related to parcels, and so they're not eligible for, um, for that particular, for the use of that fund. So, um, so that, that nexus to Prop 218 and service is, um, is important. As an example, um, if we clean up a, an encampment on a creek, it, it's not directly connected to a parcel in South San Jose. And so, so some of those charges, uh, those needed programs for compliance are not eligible for utility funding. Did I miss anything?
No, that's an, it's an economic statement. There's case law and Prop 218 is a real hurdle for us on that.
Got it. So now if we do an abatement adjacent to, say, um, uh, Coyote Creek and, um, I mean, folks adjacent to Coyote Creek pay that stormwater runoff fee, don't they?
It's a, it's a fixed fee, so it's a flat fee per, or it's evenly distributed throughout the city. You know, historically, um, we haven't had the challenges that we have today. And so, you know, 10 or 15 years ago, the fee made sense because we were really looking at maintaining that underground utility and, and the outfalls into the creek. But, um, as I think you may recall, the manager's office in collaboration with EST and other departments are doing a bit of polling to see if, um, you know, what a long-term funding source for, um, for the needed improvements could be, and, but we have not landed on anything yet.
Right. When was the last time we analyzed as a city our, our stormwater service, uh, charge and that mechanism to recover, you know, given our Prop 218 requirements on, on the nexus to the, to the service? When was the last time we analyzed that, that service fee to tie to the changes in the regulatory environment?
Um, for a number of reasons, the fee has not been increased, um, in, um, in several years and we've not done that assessment.
Well, we have actually conducted a, an assessment of possible sources of funding for stormwater, including fees, grants, um, special districts, et cetera, et cetera, and have used that to inform the polling that we're currently doing and narrowed, narrowed down the range of options. Um, as Carrie said, the existing fee is no longer fit with the requirements. So, uh, City Manager's Office in collaboration with EST Finance Department and others, um, has been looking, uh, over the last year as part of our city infrastructure strategy at that question.
Right. So you would say more than what, 10 years? 15 years? What?
Of what? I'm sorry. More than 10 years of what?
My, my question was, when was the last time we, as, as a city analyzed?
Uh, this year. This year. This last year, we started to do that.
Uh, so, so, uh, to, to, okay, so we, we've, we've analyzed it and have, are we, are we expected to come back to council with an informational memorandum or?
Yes, we're expected to come back to council with recommendations for future funding in this area and, and recommending potential fees depending on where the polling might meet and the legal requirements and the fiscal requirements. So that, that analysis is ongoing and we would, uh, and has a high level of urgency due to everything that you all have been talking about for the last several weeks.
Right, right. And, and it's important because as we're making conversations on how much money we're going to be shifting, uh, to cover our requirement, our requirements under the stormwater obligation, I mean, I think it's prudent that we look under every stone if we're going to be disrupting our, 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 our housing strategy, uh, if we're going to be, you know, divesting or to meet our permanent, permit requirements given the regulatory environment, um, because of that. So, so I would, uh, my question, I guess, goes into, are we going to be having that conversation as we're talking about this budget deliberation and as this process to help us make these decisions to see what we can offset, say, next year or the year after instead of, you know, going all in this year on those conversations?
We won't have enough information and certainly won't have a decision in time to tell you anything affecting next, the needed investments for next fiscal year. Our intention is to do that work and bring it forward in a way that it would affect the next, uh, subsequent fix, uh, fiscal years and allow you to guide your investments, hopefully with some good news. But at this point, we have no, nothing that we can bring to you that alleviates the issue.
Got it. No, thank you, Kip. And, and, you know, given, you know, my staff just texted me, the last time, uh, we analyzed the rate structure according to our records is July of 2011. So given it's been more than 13 years and, you know, the, the permit, the permit obligations consistently shift, especially given the, you know, the 2015 lawsuit, you know?
Yeah. Thank you. The, the rate was last increased in, in 2012. However, um, we also have filed unfunded mandate, um, filings with the state. As the, as the permit have changed, has changed, we've tried to say, hey, you know, there needs to be supplemental funding for that. Um, those are still, um, still outstanding and not resolved. So certainly, um, you know, looking far and wide for opportunities to, um, to fund it in a legal fashion.
Thank you, Carrie.
If I could just jump into, I, I think one of the things that has, has gone missing in the conversation is the polling work we've been doing too, is around moving to a tax so that we have more flexibility and you all have more flexibility about how we use that funding with these shifting priorities from the federal government. The fee structure with Prop 218, we, we have severe limitations and we've been unable to shift for some of those mandates. So the, the polling that we've done and are, hopefully will be out in the field in, in the coming weeks, will really be around a tax so that we do have that flexibility. We were far from the threshold that we would need for something to consider for this November, so we're continuing to refine that and we'll hopefully be asking for direction for the 2026 cycle around prioritizing some of that work.
Yeah, you're right, right, right. So thank you, thank you, Lee. I, I appreciate that and, you know, we know that the difficult decisions that come with any, any new tax for our residents, given the high cost of living. And so, you know, I, I caution us to be, you know, to be careful as we, as we look, you know, as we look onwards for, for our residents' sake. But, uh, you know, uh, things like large trash capture devices, which are very, very expensive, that could be localized and could draw an easier legal nexus given our Prop 218 requirements. Those are, those are some of the things that we can do, given our, our requirements and our constraints is what I'm referring to. And, and I'm sure you are all doing that and I know you're jumping at the bids to comments.
And those are using utility funds. So that's, you're right. That's a clear nexus.
Right.
And, and those large captured, large trash capture devices are, are funded with utility funds.
Got it. Okay. All right. Awesome. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Great. Thanks, Councilor. Councilor Cohen?
Thank you. Um, I'm going to start by following up on some of those questions. And, and Lee, you said something that piqued my interest about, you, you used the word, you said tax and then you said shifting the cost. Is the, is the, is the thought behind this is that we might eliminate a stormwater fee and replace it with a tax or is it, would that be an additional?
I, I can defer to Kip. I personally think that's work yet to be determined on how we look at all of that. But the tax does definitely provide more flexibility to hit federal and state mandates that the fee doesn't allow now.
Yeah. And given the mandate of the ongoing requirements, um, both on the things which are fee-eligible and where the additional requirements are stretching on the tax, I would caution any ability to replace unless we go for a very large, a very significant tax increase.
Well, you're talking about a tax increase either way. I'm just curious as to the palatability of, of a tax that might be, well, you no longer would pay a stormwater fee, but we want to charge?
Yeah, and that's something that we can test.
For this tax, and the tax will have to be a little bit larger than you pay now because we need more revenue, but we're not going to do this on top of what you're already paying your fees. Anyway, just something for, for thought.
Yeah, and I'll defer to Lee's answer, which was better put. I think a lot will depend on the polling and the appetite of, of people on how they want to approach funding that.
And I'm also curious, oh, sorry.
I'm going to say, I'm sorry. I do think that is something we will look at. We did that once before on, on a telephone line fee. We changed it into a telephone tax. And so that, we do have experience in conversion to give us more flexibility. So I think your point's well taken. We'll, we'll need to pull on that and pull on that, and pull on keeping both and, and looking at all the options and give you, give you all our best recommendation based on what the polling says.
Great. Thank you. Um, sort of a little more detail on that. I'm trying to understand the nexus question. I mean, the store, there's a storm sewer on my street, right? There's one on probably each side of the street. There are many multiple houses, there's other properties that flood out, that water flows off of those properties and into the storm sewer. How do we determine what the nexus is on a storm sewer fee? Um, and who's responsible for certain kinds of cleanup? And I'm just curious, maybe this is too long of a conversation for now, but I'd like to understand a little bit better as we move forward.
Um, it's a bit of a legal ass, uh, question, so I'm going to ask Nora if, um, if she has a succinct way to describe how we evaluate that nexus?
It's a case-by-case evaluation and there's some case law that guides the determination. And we can brief council further if?
Yeah, I mean, let's have a conversation separately. I think it's worth, worth delving into this a bit as we are dealing with what is being framed as a stormwater issue to understand all of the different sources, how we have a nexus, which, which parts can be funded by the residential fees and the, and business fees on storm sewers, et cetera. So take it offline and I think we, I'm, I'm interested in following up. I see two items, line items on the proposed budget that mention trash capture device maintenance and municipal stormwater permit inspection programs. Are these funded out of general fund or are these funded out of utility funds?
Those are funded out of utility funds.
They're utility funds. So this, this is, these are already coming out of that stormwater fee as it is already. Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you. Since we're kind of short on time, I'll, I'll just ask one more quick question. Just to say overall, I really, this is a really important CSA. I don't want, I feel like bad that we're kind of rushing it, but it's also, we've had a lot of conversations at council meetings and committee meetings on this topic. We recently obviously had a large discussion on the roadmap and, and for energy, so I won't ask any questions on energy today. Um, just one last question on EST. I know that there's the budget, some budget adjustments based on vacancies. So vacancies only at this point? Is there any fear about some of our ambitious goals and how we might not be able to meet goals because of cuts that were, that are being proposed in this year's budget?
Um, no, council member. We worked collaboratively with, collaboratively with the HR department and the city manager's office to evaluate where, where it made sense. A position had been vacant for a number of time. We've been getting along with it, without it, and we, as a department, we still have over 85 vacancies. So, um, so it's going to take us a bit of time to catch up and, um, as our conversations with Jennifer Schembry have gone, you know, if we, we reach the point where we are feel like, hey, could we relook at those, certainly there's openness to reconsider that.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thanks, council member. Councilor Torres?
Hello. Greetings. Thank you for your quick presentation. And I, TNE is one of the committees I do not serve on, so I, I'm glad that we have, you know, my colleagues, Councilmember Candelas and Councilmember Cohen, asking these questions because they, they sit on TNE, so they're experts at this. Um, that's why I'm, just have two questions because I, I want to get some, some clarification or, or just a little bit more information. Can you explain to me the community energy customer support? We spent almost $8 million on that. What, 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 what exactly does that do?
Yeah, sure. So we serve 350,000 customers across the city, so all of the residents and the businesses in San Jose. And so a large part of that is contracted to our billing and customer call center to provide those services. And then we also have in-house staff that answer customer billing questions and, and other questions customers have.
Okay. Great. Thank you. And then I'm a little bit confused about the community energy, uh, community energy, community programming. Uh, so in 2021 and 2022, when I was not here, uh, we spent 845,000, almost 846,000. And then, but the adopted was actually 5.6 million. So is that, is that a typo or, or did we get aggressive on something there?
I, I need to look into it, but I believe that was, um, related to the, the rescue funds out of the pandemic that were appropriated to us to spend on energy efficiency programs. And it's just taken some time to, to spend those funds.
Okay. Uh, it's, I'm going to go back to the customer service, customer support. So those are our city employees that are, that we pay?
It's a mixture. So part of it is contracted to a company called Calpine with their call center, which most CCAs use for their customer service and programming. And then we also have our own staff that answer our customer calls that are escalated to us.
Okay. Great. Thank you. And then I just, uh, I just heard, I have two more questions. I just heard Carrie say that we have 85 vacancies in EST?
Yes.
Okay. All right. That's actually, that's a lot, actually. It's a lot of vacancies, I'm assuming, right? What are the, what are the 85?
Well, we've actually brought it down over the last several years. And it's, uh, it's below, we have almost 600 FTE allocated as a department. And, and, you know, we would expect a normal, a normal turnover. And then, and we also, as, as you know, have some entry-level jobs that we expect people would promote and, and move up into the organization. But, but yes, our recruiting team is, uh, in collaboration with central HR is, is quite busy.
Okay. Great. Uh, and Jim, how much do, how much, 85 vacancies, how much is that?
I'm sorry, Councilmember Torres, if I could, my, my staff wants me just to add that we in process now are recruiting for 68. So we've certainly started to run.
I'm sorry, there was an echo.
We have 68 recruitments in process right now. So we're, we're running pretty fast.
All right. Okay. Great. And then, I guess, maybe I'll ask Jim on, uh, offline. Uh, but, so Jim, uh, I think this last question is to you. So approximately how much money, uh, that is not restricted do we have here at EST?
Oh, I think zero. I don't think there's anything that in EST has in their enterprise funds that can be used for anything. I think that's a zero.
Okay. A, a big zero, huh?
It's a big zero.
Okay. Great. Thank you. That's all, that's all for me.
Great. Thanks, council member. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Um, I just have a clarifying question regarding, uh, stormwater management. Uh, on page 444, um, it says that, um, the proposed is, uh, almost 12 million. And I was just curious, the 27 million in terms of dealing with, uh, stormwater requirements and all of that, is that above or is that including this?
Could you repeat the first part of the question again, Vice Mayor?
Oh, so, so on page 444, um, under a stormwater management, I was just curious as to the amount there is, um, let's see here, it's, uh, proposed, uh, to be almost $12 million in terms of stormwater management. So I was just curious, the 27 million that's to deal with, um, uh, the bio-waste and all of that, uh, I'm just wondering, is that inclusive of this or is it on top of this?
Uh, the 27 million is on top of what is here. So?
What is this? So this is the regular?
Yeah. So this is sort of the, the baseline budget for EST to perform their existing work related to stormwater management. The, I mean, I think there may be a couple pieces in here, but I think by and large, most of that 27 million you'll see reflected in the Public Works Department and the Housing Department and PRNS.
Oh, I see. I see. Okay. Thank you very much for that clarification.
All right. Thanks, Vice Mayor. Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you, Mayor. First question is in regards to energy. Uh, on page 432, one of the key budget changes within the Energy Department is additional staffing to support the implication of a new customer, uh, of the new customer program such as the emergency bill relief, um, and the battery storage incentive program. Wanted to ask, how does the Energy Department plan to ensure equitable local hiring practices for positions involved in implementing these new programs?
Sure. That's a great question. So it's important to note that 5 million of that is to be spent on the actual programs, not staffing. And then we are adding two positions to manage that work. And so, um, we are just getting started on workforce development, um, related to electrification and making sure that we're working with the unions as strong partners there and, um, happy to collaborate with your office further on, on that work stream.
Okay. Great. Thank you for that. Next is in relation to transportation, sanitary sewer maintenance and stormwater maintenance. Uh, one of the key budget action items on page 771 is an allocation of 1.5 million from the general fund for the oversized vehicle regulation reserve. Wanted to ask if you could provide a breakdown on how these funds are anticipated to be spent?
Thanks, Councilmember. John Risto, Director.
the general fund for the oversized vehicle regulation reserve. Wanted to ask if you could provide a breakdown on how these funds are anticipated to be spent?
Thanks, Councilmember John Risto, Director of Transportation. We will be bringing forward a manager's budget addendum that's going to explain it in more detail, but as an overview, it will be setting up this new program for us to address the oversized vehicle, the ordinance that the council has approved. And it will include staff that is going to manage that program, as well as the placement of the tollway signs, and then actual abatement of those locations once we get around to moving the vehicles. This is a limited amount of funding, so it's not going to get everything, but we will be explaining it in more detail with the MBA coming up.
All right. Thank you. And then, question regarding citywide expenses, environmental and utility services. Let's see, there are remaining funds of approximately $1.35 million on page 761, dedicated to programs like the Low Income Household Water Assistance Payment Program. I wanted to ask, will these remaining funds be rebudgeted back into the same program, or will they go into the general fund for the upcoming fiscal year?
Thank you, council member. I'm going to ask Jeff Provenzano, who is concurrently serving as our Chief Water Operator, to answer that.
Thank you for the question. Jeff Provenzano, Assistant Director, ESD. That program right now is ending, and so as soon as we wrap up that and get everything finalized, those funds can go back into the general fund.
Okay. That's great. Thank you. That's all my questions.
Great. Thank you, council member. I think that exhausts our questions for the CSA. You got off easy there. All right. We're going to thank you for all the good work. We're going to transition to strategic support and appointees, and see if we can wrap this up by noon.
Jennifer, brief.
I can be brief. Good afternoon, Jennifer Shembry, Director of Human Resources and Employee Relations, and I will be doing our very brief presentation for the Strategic Support CSA. With me here is Rick Bruno, the Finance Director, Callie Toffick, our CIO, our Chief Information Technology, and Matt Lesh, who you've seen in multiple CSAs, the Director of Public Works. And again, we are here for the Strategic Support CSA. Our CSA is the behind-the-scenes departments responsible for developing, managing, and safeguarding the city's fiscal, physical, technological, and human resources to enable and enhance the delivery of city services and projects. And in the interest of time, I'll go skip these slides, but these are our core services and program samples. We do here have our performance measure dashboard. We are one of the departments, or CSAs, that have not yet updated these, and we will be working on updating these in the next fiscal year. But our performance measurement dashboard right now looks at things such as the bond ratings, our vacancy rate, number of facilities, percentage of facilities with a condition assessment rating of good or better, as an example. But again, these will be updated in the next year. This is a budget summary. Slight changes to our budget in this, in this proposed budget, a slight decrease in our CSA total budget and the number of positions, also a slight decrease, and I will go over some of those budget proposals in a few slides. So here it goes, show some of the proposed budget actions. So we are continuing a previously funded one-time staffing for the San Jose 311 program. In the Human Resources Department, we are continuing, although slightly revised, some additional recruitment staffing that was previously one-time funded, disaster recovery and grants management staffing, also continuing, that was previously one-time funded, and city hall audiovisual program management staff. In our reductions, there is a slight reduction in janitorial services, a reduction in the debt management staffing and revenue management staffing, some vacant position allowances in the IT Department and Enterprise Technology Manager, and in the Human Resources Department, we are reducing some of our learning and development non-personal funding. So our summary, we continue to maintain favorable bond ratings, maintaining our city facilities, equipment, and vehicles, focusing on making San Jose a great place to work by focusing on both recruitment and retention of our employees, and enriching the quality of life in San Jose through innovation, collaboration, and engagement. And with that, we are happy to answer any questions.
All right. Great. Thank you for the presentation. Turning to colleagues. Questions or comments? Councilmember Foley?
I don't have any questions. I just want to thank you for being here and for the work that you all do, and I see Joe and Roberto up in the, in the seats up there as well. So I just want to thank you all for being here and for the work that you do.
Great. Thank you, council member. I'll echo that thanks. I know many of these teams are often a little more behind the scenes, but as the name implies, are really creating that foundation that enables all of our other departments to be successful in carrying out the critical work they do. So we're grateful to you. Also want to express my thanks once again. I know we're not done. We still have capital budget tomorrow and fees and charges, but I want to thank the Budget Office again. This process, as always, is extremely arduous. I know you go through many, many weeks of just long days and lack of sleep, and the council comes at you with every possible question and concern and idea, and we're not there yet, but I've found these study sessions very educational and been impressed with the quality of the answers we've had. So just want to thank you all, the entire administration. Jennifer, it looks like you want to chime in, and then I'll just share briefly kind of what the plan is.
I think before we can get to the plan for tomorrow, it's an opportunity for the council, normally it goes in alphabetical order, ask any of the appointees.
Appointees as well.
Any questions that they, at least give the opportunity to ask if there's any questions on their budgets.
Okay, great. We have all appointees here, is that?
We should.
Correct. I see city auditor, clerk.
Attorney, manager.
Yep. Okay, great.
IPA was heard under.
So that's a good flag. Thank you for that. So once again, I'll pause for a moment to see if any colleagues have questions for any of the council appointees at this time. Still not seeing any hands go up. So what we will do is, we'll take a moment to see if we have public comment. Tomorrow, we asked everyone to hold 9 to noon. I don't think we'll need that much time, but we still need to go through fees and charges, and then capital budget across all of our, across the city and all of our CSAs. Is there anything else, Jennifer, that I'm missing?
You've got it.
Okay. Great. All right. Tony, do we have any comment cards?
Two public speakers. I have Chris and Dinah.
Chris and Dinah are here. You can come on down. Dinah, go ahead and come on down. You can, you have two minutes.
Thank you, everybody. I wanted to just come down and let you know that it is recognized and appreciated, the ongoing support for animal services. It's been, it's been a long, hard road, but I really do want to thank all of you, city manager, mayor, city council, and everybody that I have spoken to, for continuing to demonstrate support through this latest budget, and it does not go unnoticed or unappreciated. And I know that there is still a lot of work ahead of us, but the spay and neuter, trap neuter return, as well as opportunities for collaboration, such as projects with the encampment sweeps and animal services and rescue partners, has been, has been growing, and I am happy to say that I am seeing progress. And with the addition of the full-time vet position, I am hoping to see continued improvement with regards to the live release rate for the cats, and wanted to, again, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Doesn't, doesn't appear that the other speaker is still here. Was there anyone else from the public who wished to speak? Not seeing anyone come forward. So we're adjourned. Thank you all.